All right, we started the meeting April, I'm sorry, August 21st, meeting the Board of Selectmen. We had a brief executive session at 5:30 and now we are in open session. We are meeting with Travis Miller from Community Paradigm. No, I'm looking at the wrong agenda?
Carlson Group.
Carlson Group, I'm sorry. It says Community Paradigm, that's funny. Oh geez, wrong spot. It's the eclipse, sorry folks.
It was very cool looking.
It was beautiful to talk to us about the services that they would be providing for us in the fire and EMS consultant position. So I will turn it over to Travis.
Sure. I'm not really sure, I can talk a little bit about-
Let me just, you know, we sent out a note saying we're looking for comprehensive consulting services vis-à-vis fire and EMS.
Yep.
We want to study. One of the things that's leading us to this is we just approved to have a new police station built. And the follow-on to that is what should we be doing vis-à-vis the fire station? It's not immediately in the cards, but even before we wanted to get into that, we wanted to make sure that the way we were strategically approaching the operation of the fire EMS made sense, so that we could turn to the residents and say, "Look, we've done the study, this is the way we're going over the next three or five years, and, you know, this is why we're doing it." Then, later on, the building will fall out of it.
Right.
But we've also thought about, you know, should we go to an outside ambulance service? We've looked at that before and it was very expensive, we assume it's still very expensive. And we've also looked at potentially partnering with an adjoining town. And from that aspect, if we look at that, what do we need to know about even how to approach that? So that's sort of where we are. We're kind of looking to you as the expert to come in and say, "Here's what you should be thinking of, and if we were doing it, here's the approach we would take." And I know I looked at one of your, you sent me, I believe, one of your proposals-
Yep.
-at another town and-
Yep.
That seemed to be the way we were going.
Yep. So, thank you for having me here. I thought I'd try to make this as much of a conversation as possible, so let me talk some about how we try to approach these things, and some about, just a couple of things we're working on right now, and hopefully that'll give you a sense as to the approach that we use in a little bit more depth. So Chris and I have been working together for 18 years of the 25 years that I've been doing this as a consultant. Chris is on the West Coast, I'm on the East Coast. We work on projects together, we work on smaller projects separately, but kind of read each other's work, make sure that we're maintaining a consistency about how we're doing these things. He was a fire chief in a couple of different organizations. One of them was a six-station system, the other one was a three-station system. While he did that, he was working on a PhD in organizational development, and then as he says it, he got tired of the gray t-shirt versus the blue t-shirt argument. Gray t-shirt shows sweat, the blue t-shirts are hotter, but the gray ones look nicer, and it was California, and there was this, you know, this constant union stuff that he didn't want to deal with. And these were bigger organizations. And so he left and really got into working in the EMS service delivery environment, not just in California, but across the country. Doing things like helping airlines figure out, should we put AEDs and other devices on our airplanes, and if so, how, down to what size, and how many, and how complicated a system should we, and should we be putting drugs on airplanes, and who should we be teaching to use them, and all of those kinds of questions. We spend a lot of our time answering the kinds of questions that you're trying to answer. As communities face increasing expectations in terms of service delivery, as you face increasing pressures in terms of how to pay for those things, whether you're in a prop two-and-a-half environment like we are and the cap that's out there, in terms of prop two-and-a-half, which not many people are thinking and talking about, but which is out there, I mean, sort of at the end of the rainbow, and some communities are closer to that than others, as well as some of the fairly unique things that are done in terms of service delivery, and you're one of those communities where you've got this combination of full-time people and part-time people, and then paid-on-call people, all working together to try to provide a level of service to the community. You know, in terms of how we look at those things, I mean, first, we try to get an understanding of what is it that you're trying to do? What is it that you've asked the chief in the department to do? What do they think they're trying to accomplish for you? And how formal is that? Is that something that they've driven, or is that something that the community has driven? Has there been an actual conversation somewhere in the community about what's the service level expectation? Often not, right? And in particular, I mean, it hasn't happened in the community I live in, which is a 40-square-mile community with two major highways, major gas lines, huge power, I mean, trains, the whole bit, three fire stations. There's been no service level conversation at all, and that is not an uncommon situation. And so you're asking questions about, "Well, what should we be doing, and how should we be doing it?" Awesome questions, trying not to go out and spend millions of dollars on facilities that may not meet the need that you've got, or that you may have, five, 10, 15, 20, because these are not two-year decisions, right? These are not 20-year decisions in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. These are oftentimes 40 or 140-year decisions. I mean, these are multiple-generation decisions for even public safety facilities. We're working with some communities right now that are on both sides of that service delivery system. I'm working with a community right now that is a single-station, absolutely full-time fire-rescue service-delivery agency that does not have their own ambulances, surrounded by fire departments that do. They had a chief that had no interest in doing it. I don't know why. Nobody in the department seems to know why, but that chief didn't, and now the current chief is trying to do it, and of course, is facing a huge cost ramp-up and trying to figure out how to get there. We're going to know the department that's kind of a center community that provides ambulance services to towns all around them, and ironically, I've worked for one of the towns that they provide service to that wants to do their own ambulance service delivery. And they both face very different challenges, and the advice and counsel that you offer both of those places sometimes is, would seem to be contradictory, but it's because you're advising two different people, right? You want to sell your house for a million dollars, I'd like to buy it for a dollar. Somewhere in there is the right answer. And our job as consultants is, for the person that you're working for, the community that you're working for, is to help guide that person into getting the best result for that community based on the expectations that the community has for what you're willing to pay for it at the time. Private ambulance companies love to charge towns for service delivery. Not sure that that's always necessarily necessary. I mean, they want the business, they'd like to lock down the fact that they're the only provider in town. There are ways to accomplish that, but it's also nice to control your own service delivery system. So, I'm not trying to solve the problem, I'm not trying to give you an answer to any question right now, because I haven't spent-
So how would you come in and approach, you know?
Yeah, so, sort of a two-pronged thing. I mean, we try to collect as much information as we possibly can, and now, oftentimes, we'll reach out to the chief and to the town and say, "Here's a list of things we'd like to get." It's easier now to get it beforehand, because now we can show up smarter. It used to be that that was an unfair request, right? When I started out, you'd say, "Hey, we'd like to know something about your calls for service," and you were talking about, literally talking about boxloads of five-by-eight cards that you'd have to go and sit and go through. I mean, now, it's, somebody shoots you a file, or it's on a, the worst case, they hand you a thumb drive when you get there, or something like that. So you try to get as much of that data kind of stuff upfront, so that you can spend a little bit of time going through it and looking at it, and literally mapping it out, as well as trying to gain some understanding as to what you're facing in terms of service delivery, how well you're handling that set of service-delivery expectations, what are you doing in terms of response times, how well is the call force being able to help you meet those service expectations when the full-time and part-time folks are already committed to a call, and so on and so forth? Where's your, where are you going for hospital?
The BI in Plymouth is out of bed control.
Right, okay. So, and you've got fairly long transport times?
Yeah, 11 to 14 minutes.
So that's not bad, and then it's how quickly they can get you out the door?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah. Common, I mean, that's everybody's problem. So, start looking at those kinds of things, because some of that you can't control. I mean, some of it you can beg them to be nice to you, but some of it you can't control anyway. And then come down, and you just have to come down and talk to people and see how things run. I mean, the challenge with fire rescue is, even in busy systems, except for in like the busiest systems, it's very difficult to say, "I'm going to come down and I'm going to go ride on a bunch of calls." You can't pick the time. I mean, except for the Fort Lauderdale's and the Sacramento's of the world where the units are, I mean, they're running like, I mean, they're running 20, 25 calls a day. You just, you can't, you can't go park yourself someplace and do that. So you just, but you have to have the data, and then you have to come down and talk to people about what they're doing, and then you compare what they say they're dealing with to what the data is, and have conversations about that stuff. And then you come back and have a conversation about what you think the issues are, right? What is the data saying to us? What are the conversations saying to us? And that isn't, "The chief said," or, you know, "Larry says that it's, hey, when we looked at the data," versus when we had conversations with the call force, "We're seeing something different than that, can somebody explain that to me?" Oh yeah, what they really mean is, oh, okay. And then we go through that stuff and start talking about what possible solutions might be. Because sometimes, one of the ideas that we think is a great idea is something you stopped doing a year ago for a really good reason. And so we don't want, we don't want the front page to be, "Consultant really stupid, didn't know that they stopped doing that last year, you look like an idiot, we look like idiots, you look like, like, we look like we haven't talked to each other." And then hopefully, we come back and say, "Okay, yeah, those sound like interesting ideas." We go back and put some structure around those things, and come back and make recommendations for you, in fair amount of detail, so that you can make a good decision about what you want to do and implement something.
So who do you talk to when you start your study? Who is your normal audience?
I mean, I think in a community of this size and in a department of this size, we would certainly, I mean, there's not that many full-time and part-time people to talk to, you talk to all of them. And then, you know, you, I think what we would do is offer to spend a couple evenings talking to call force, so that you'd give people a couple different chances, even a weekend night, something like that, to give people an opportunity to come in and, in a group, talk about what they thought the issues were. You know, there's, there are some very real challenges that call forces or volunteers of any type, I mean, whether it's in a fire-rescue agency, or in a soccer organization, or whatever. I mean, the world is changing, the expectations on people and their families is changing, and how many careers it takes to pay for your house is changing, and all of these influences are out there. And there's a fascinating book I read called Bowling Alone, which, you know, people assume that bowling alleys are going away. They're not. And in fact, there's more, more people are spending time bowling than ever before. But they're not bowling in leagues. They don't have time to go to bowling league, but they take their kids, they do birthday parties and all this other stuff, right? But that's what's happened, is it's, it's, they're not doing it as part of an organized thing. It's not the Quanis Club bowling team anymore. It's, they go with their wife and their kids, or they take 10 kids in the two vans and whatever else. So you need to have those conversations, particularly in a combination department like this, with the folks that are the bulk of your service delivery, particularly for the unusual calls, not just the routine stuff, but the stuff that requires more than a couple people to handle. Then you also need to talk, I mean, I would assume we'd need to talk to you guys, I would assume that we would need, if the, you can have a brand-new town administrator sometime, maybe this fall?
Probably December time, frankly.
Yeah, so, I mean, you have somebody acting in that capacity, or will you?
Husbands.
Okay, okay. So, I mean, we do that, I don't know if you'd want us to talk to somebody in FinCom, or somebody in a finance role, just to get a sense as to what's going on there. And, I mean, we've got some flexibility in terms of who we can talk to. And honestly, through those interviews that we do at that, in that first round, people will say, "Wow, you really need to make sure that you have a conversation with so-and-so." Because if you don't, you're not going to get a good full picture of what's going on. So it's, there is some, there's some organic sort of dynamic to that also.
So you mentioned the somewhat uniqueness here of our blend of full-time, part-time, and on-call. You're used to that blend or untangling?
Yeah, it's funny, it's not that uncommon in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'm working in a place right now that has full-time in a union, call, part-time, and students who live there 10 months out of the year. The students staff their own engine company, the call staff their own engine company, the part-timers staff their own engine company, and then the career guys staff like a couple stations with. And so they'll say, well, you know, the career guys will say, "Well, we're understaffed." You say, "Well, yeah, that's true," except on, like, from this day to this time of day to this time of day, when you've actually got like eight more people. It's, the system is crazy, and they've, you've got like declining levels of participation. And so the town has been running along for years, being able to understaff on the career side, in that particular example, because they've had these three different sets of resource that they've been relying upon. Well, what's happening is, one of those in particular, the participation rate is, I mean, it's literally dropped off the table. It's non-existent. And so, yeah, I mean, you have to get, you have to be able to understand, and to be able to understand it quickly. It's everywhere, it's from, from the tip of the cape all the way to the far western parts of the state, it's all, and then you hit, and I grew up in upstate New York, you hit the, you hit the border, doesn't exist. You'll find volunteers, not paid, at all. And then you'll find ambulance companies that have full-time paramedics, maybe some full-time EMTs with volunteer ambulance drivers, and then you'll get some like part-time paid EMTs and stuff like that. And then you get to Ohio, and you'll find career fire departments that are made up of part-time workers who work in like four or five different fire departments. They work three shifts a month for three or four different places, because nobody pays them benefits. So they'll work a day in Kettering, a day in Mason, then they get a huge fire, and they hit the, they're like, "Oh, we need help." It's like, "Well, I can't come up, I'm, you know." But they may show up on a mutual aid engine company, working for the place next door.
So the degree to which it's a problem, you're comfortable helping us untangle it?
Yes. If it's a problem.
Right.
It may just be the nature of the creature.
And that's, you know, sometimes that's an interesting answer, like, this isn't as bad as it seems.
It may just be that that's what 17-year-old boys are like, right? I mean, you don't have to accept all of it, and some behavior from 17-year-old boys, and I have one, is unacceptable. I mean, just because their brands work that way does not mean that you can tolerate it. And there are things in combination fire departments, unacceptable behavior if it starts to occur. I mean-
Big challenge.
It is a, it is the most difficult kind of fire-rescue system to run, period. No matter its size. But there are certain things that if they start to happen, you've, you've got to stop them.
Absolutely.
I mean-
Absolutely.
Lauren, what questions do you have?
Well, it's a, I mean, you've hit on a lot of the things that make up different departments and how they're structured. Plumpton is, was all-call for many years.
Yep.
They've never been volunteered, but they were all-call. And there's 23 or 24 guys who did a great job, a great job, because when I came on, that was how it was done. And most lived in town. We did not start the ambulance until, I think it was 2001, when we finally got it going. It was BLS only. We did it all on a on-call basis. But as the years have gone on, everybody's working everywhere else, the level of certifications go up further as we go along, the level of commitment on the fireside also, certifications, one-two certs, you know, hazmat, things like that, they continue to grow. It's less of a hobby, and less of people who just want to help and do a great job, to now more of a, you know, a certified position, that, you know, if you want to stay on, you want to stay with us, you have to work on that stuff.
Yep.
So for some of the folks, you know, thank you, but I, you know, it's too much for what I'm doing, where my life is right now. So that's what we've seen, a drop-off of call people that live in town, and as we've gone on and advanced the advanced life support level, in 2012, was it 12 or 14? 12. Yeah, it was 12. We'll start our fifth year in December. That whole business right there, to reach the advanced life support level, now, there's a whole other challenge of providers, certifications, you know, quality improvement and assurance, all of those things.
And keeping them.
And keeping them, yeah. Now, stir all that with the fires, the fire services hiring in a big way.
Yep.
Right now, they have been for the last three or four years, and they're going to continue to for the, probably the next three or four years. So that has been one of the challenges that we faced. So you're hitting a lot of it right on the head in this little town.
And you've got some, you've got some big hiring markets that are not that long a drive from you.
That's correct.
Some big, I mean, some, for this state, you've got some fairly big attractive systems.
That's correct, yeah. Yeah. Call volume. Yeah, yeah, our call volume has increased to the point where I became chief, we were at 299. We finished this last calendar year at 626 calls, 449 of them were EMS calls. So the calls for service are increasing. We cover with two standby around the clock. It's a mixture of, there's a couple full-timers, and then a mixture of call guys in between to fill it, fill it. We are a PB service.
Yep.
Paramedic-based, and it's working very well. So those, those are some of the challenges, to keep that schedule filled.
Do you bring those call guys in? Are they in-
They are in the station now. We have the, the town purchased, they, they, mobile home out there for us.
Yep.
So now we have the facilities for them to stay safely there, they have good accommodations, and now we have them working from, responding from the station. And as a result of that, the on-scene response times are better than the national average. We're at 5.7 minutes.
Sure, because you're going to, you can knock all kinds of-
It's a cold, boom, bawling.
And safer.
It is, and we're getting, we can launch a ambulance and an engine together at the same time on an MVA to get started, or both, they'll take the call that comes in. If it's a fire, they'll launch with the fire, then we'll, they'll get down there, take a look. If it's no big deal, fine, we'll handle it. If it's more than that, we'll hit the all-call for the callback.
So you'll send two guys, one and one, to an MVA, just to get the equipment there?
That's correct, right.
And then do the other responders come in POVs, or do they come here and get another piece?
No, they, to get another piece. Only the officers are allowed to respond to the scene.
Yeah.
Based on the discretion and what first reports we get.
Right, so if they say, "We have a problem."
Right, and that, and that's what I rely, whether or not it's an officer or not, the first responding unit has to give, has one minute to give me a report.
Yep.
What do we have? And then with that, we'll respond from there. And it works pretty well. Most MVAs are a little spill control, maybe a little cutting, most likely not.
Right.
You know, that way, and they can manage it. And if a transport decision is made, they'll, we'll dump the engine right there, and I'll get it back. I actually, the other day, we actually had to tone out for somebody to go get it, because I was unavailable. So most of the time, I'll take it back.
We had a medical call, the same, another medical call, the same time.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And then we'll build up, we'll ramp up, and if the second call comes in, we'll hit the all-call, see who we get, and if it's a medical call of any significance, we'll start a mutual aid ambulance to the scene. And if we get there for us, it will take their run. If not, our neighbors will assist us.
Okay.
Mark, did you have any more questions?
I think I'm all right for the moment. Well, if you-
Okay, well, I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah, please, you go.
I found the desired community service level to be intriguing. How do you determine what that is? Is it for fire and EMS, or are you looking at a package deal?
So, you've only got one station. I mean, part of it is if, so there are essentially three, there are nationally three ways of looking at service delivery in the fire-rescue world, sort of writ large. And there was one for the longest time, which was ISO, the insurance rating stuff, which has at its root, right, these little circles, literally, because I used to have this collection, and depending on the size of the map, you have this collection of cans, and you could draw circles, depending on where the people want to put their, literally, people want to put their fire stations, or compasses, or whatever you had. Because these things all come from someplace, those circles came from like, how far can you make a bunch of horses run towing such-and-such a bunch of stuff before you start killing horses? Literally, I mean, that's where the size of those circles came from. Not very compelling these days. Not many folks are towing fire trucks around using horses anymore. Although some of us are still running fire trucks out of the same buildings that we were towing things, including the town of Andover, where I live now. So, the next one is NFPA. So, 15 years ago or so, yeah, a little more then, a big group at NFPA got together, started working on-
What does that stand for?
National Fire Protection Association, located in beautiful Quincy, Massachusetts.
Okay.
They decided that it would be fun to put this committee together and get a big, giant, plastic bag full of gasoline, and throw it into the middle of every town hall in America, and then roll a hand grenade in and shut the door. So they created this document called NFPA 1710. Now, NFPA 1710 is a perfectly awesome document if you are one of the quote metro fire departments, which are the cities you can think of, right? Corpus Christi, up to New York City, kinds of places. And those places have four-person engine companies already, they have lots of ladder trucks running around, I mean, they've got all the stuff that you would go find if you read that document, it's very boring. But I mean, it's actually kind of interesting, but it's not that interesting. So a bunch of other, and then they created this other sort of sister document called NFPA 1720, which was written for most of the fire departments by number in the United States, and firefighters by number, the predominantly volunteer agencies out there in the United States. NFPA 1710 is full of a bunch of stuff, in terms of response times, and you should do this, and do this, and do this, do this, blah, 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 get your authority, which has jurisdiction, which is U3, which is really town meeting, but which is in effect U3. Signs off on something which the chief comes to you and reports on annually, which of course, nobody does, because that's not the fun part of 1710. The fun part is to beat up on you guys, because we don't have four-person engine companies. That part's fun. So, then there's 1720. So all 1720 says is that if you have a volunteer agency, as soon as you assemble an effective firefighting force, and you get a hose line to the front door, you should be able to put water on the base of the fire in two minutes or less. Okay? What nobody does and wants to do is write NFPA 1715, or whatever you would call it, which is for communities like this, up to 100,000 people or so, that says, "Okay, you're a suburban community, what are you supposed to do with yourselves?" Right? Like where most people live that don't live in big cities. And, so there's that mess. And it is a mess, it's a big, giant mess. And then there's something called the Center for Public Safety Excellence, which has this whole process that you can go through, ultimately, which would, if you cared about spending a ton of money to do it, result in an accredited fire department. And that, they lay out a process of looking at yourself, and some of that is stuff that we do for, for places that feel like spending money on it. But some of it is having conversations between the department and yourselves and the community, and holding, you know, little meetings in rooms like this, and offering free cookies to get people to come in and have conversations about, "Okay, what do you expect out of your fire department?" Well, we expect you to get, you know, if I have a heart attack in my barn in the furthest corner of wherever, then you're going to get here in two minutes or less. Okay, that's, so you write that down on, you know, a big piece of paper. You go through all that stuff, and you say, "Okay, if we did everything you want, it would cost us $150 million a year to run our fire department. We're not doing that." I mean, so we're doing what we're doing, and nobody's really complaining that much. We're complaining a little, because that's what we do, because it's too nice out to complain about the weather, so we'll complain about the fire department instead. Although it's getting muggy, so we could start complaining about that, I suppose. it's getting muggy, so we could start complaining about that, I suppose. But you have to have a conversation about what are we trying to do and why are we trying to do it? And whether the chief does that or you hire somebody like me to come in and help kind of guide that process, you do that over a couple of weeks. Then you come up with a document that says, okay, we're committed to delivering, you know, fire and EMS services at the highest possible level, blah, 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 which means we're going to do ALS and we're going to do this and we're going to continue, you know, doing it through a combination of full time and part time and on call people because honestly, we can't really afford to do it any other way. And we're going to continue to look for ways to. And that, that's the kind of document that you're trying to do because then you can go to town meeting and say, yeah, we want an extra 40 grand this year to do something in the fire department, whether it's to buy radios or new boots or whatever, because it furthers this thing that you as a community have agreed upon is what you're trying to do. Not just because the chief comes in and says, well, I think it's, I think we need it and it's cool, but because you've had, you've, you've got a contract in essence between the department and the community about what you're trying to, to do together. It is not always a fun process and at times, I've seen people go through it where there's a, a more suburban looking, a denser part of a community, you know, down here and there's a more rural part of a community up there and they have to say, well, 95% of the people live down here, we're going to put two fire stations down here and we're not putting a third one up there. And if you choose to live 10 miles out of the center of town, we are telling you as a community that you should expect 15 minute response times. If you live down here, you should expect five minute response times. But at least then you're being honest with people about what you're telling them.
That's not what I expected at all. I thought this was going to be more of determining, the end, what you talked about at the end was what I thought this would be, would be getting together with the council on aging, getting together with groups and finding out what the town expects because I was hoping that.
That's all part of it. That's all part of those conversations.
Let's say they say, I'm willing to go, that they are not looking for a five minute response time on a fire and maybe it makes more sense and it would, we'd have better service if we combined the fire portion of it with another town. Is that the type of thing that you're going to be looking at based on talking to the residents and the chief and us?
We could, we could point, we could say to you, I mean, we can't do for, for the kind of money that we proposed, we can't do a consolidation feasibility study for you, but we could say, hey, there's an option here or an opportunity here for you to look at. You should be looking at joint service delivery for some of these things. I mean, should small communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts be looking to do things together on every level? Yes, you should be.
How much would it cost for a consolidation survey?
I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to think about that a little bit.
I think that's part of what we thought we would be.
I mean, it would cost a little bit more. And I think that, you know, those kinds of questions relate to when the, when, when the governor, eight or so years ago, when they started releasing money to look at regional communication systems. What I would have done, and I said this as loud as I could say it to as many people as would listen, what I would have done is I would have taken that money and I would have taken the hazmat districts and I would have created six regional fire rescue dispatch centers, 911 centers, that took all the incoming 911 calls. And I wouldn't have asked anybody. I would have done what Maine did and would have just said, yeah, here you go, here's where the six centers are, we're paying for them. Here's all the incoming 911 calls are coming here, these are the PSS, period. We're not asking you anymore. This is where the calls come. This is the software, we're going to go out and do a big, and this is the CAD that everybody's going to use. We don't care what RMS you want to use locally, not our problem. Do whatever you want. But you will have this CAD system because we're going to put it in your dispatch center. And you want to have your own dispatch center? Fantastic, there you go. Here's a license to the CAD. Because that was Rhode Island's mistake was they didn't do that. Answer the phone if it's an EMS call, they do emergency medical dispatch sitting there and they push the call to whoever it is needs to get pushed to. And they dispatch fire rescue at the regional level, not this running around with, because it's been a disaster, it hasn't worked, what they tried to do. I mean, they've got some successes kind of here and there, a couple little ones, but it's a problem. Like I call 911 in Andover, my fiance's got huge allergy issues, I don't even call 911. I call the seven digit, well, the 10 digit number for my dispatch center. I don't talk to, I don't talk to the county because they're useless to me, they can't, I spend a minute telling them who I really want to talk to. So yeah, we could look at it and if you need a, I can give you a modification.
Well, we can discuss that.
All right. The consolidate, what's in the consolidation study that isn't in what you're proposing?
Well, one, you'd have to have agreement from whoever it was that, like, I can't, if, if you want us to look at consolidation issues with one or more of your surrounding communities at something other than just the theoretical level about yes, you could, you do not want us doing that and naming a particular name unless that name knows that that's happening. I mean, that's, right, I mean, you wouldn't want to read it. You would not want to wake up in the morning and read that had just hired a consultant and says, wow, we should be merging fire departments and you're like, wait, what? Without some at least MOU sign that you were going to look at that issue together and they hadn't come and talked to you.
So that requires.
There had to be some conversations. And frankly, there's money from the state to pay for those kinds of things. You, you should, I wouldn't pay for it on your own, I'd go get the state money to do it. And I wouldn't wait to do this to get that money. Because there's separate questions.
But yeah, it could be done as a separate piece. That could be a recommendation you make.
Yep, yep.
And then we pursue.
Yep.
That based on.
Yep.
Recommendation.
Yep. Because at this point, you'd be, you'd be looking to get into the process to get money released next July anyway.
So, go ahead, Mark. So a couple of questions, I, these can be pretty brief. So this may be overly blunt, but your, your quote on, on expenses here, I, we've spoken to several companies and they're all over the place.
I bet.
Yours is very attractive. Other than this consolidation though, are there things we're missing, we're not asking you to do? Otherwise, is this pretty comprehensive for us to make decisions about where to go?
I mean, I'll tell you, one of the things that we're doing that is enabling us to do it that way and to price things that way. I mentioned Corpus Christi later, earlier rather, as an example, and so we did a project for them. Friend of mine is no longer, but was at the time the city manager there. And I knew they were going to issue this RFP, he called me and asked me to bid on it, I knew we were going to, I mean, I knew we were going to do the project. They put out an RFP with like 11 questions in it, 12. We went down, had a meeting with the senior staff and I said, okay, you know, with 12 questions and, you know, what if we find, he says, we don't, we have 12 questions and we have a city council that wants two to three pages per question. I'm like, wow, that's really interesting. He says, question, answer, discussion, two to three pages. Because a lot of consultants will just write and write and write and write because they think they're, they, they feel bad because they think, well, you spent a lot of money and so you want them to write and write. Well, nobody wants to read and read and read, right? Because what people want to do is they want to look and see how old is, I don't know, Selena Gomez, right? They want to, they want to go flick and they want to like look it up on their, well, that's, people's attention span for this stuff has gotten.
Yep.
And you guys are busy, this is not the only thing you have to think about. Public is busy and honestly, for a lot of people, if, if we come up with seven or eight questions that we're going to answer through a project like this, most people really care about one of those questions individually, right? Like you care about two of them and you care about three others and you care about one of them and the chief cares about five of them because he's the chief, you care about six of them. But what people really want to do is go to the one they care about, tear out those three pages and read that.
Couple of other questions, just about references. Usually I get stuck dealing with the references. We could save time on this.
Sorry.
For the Wilbraham one, it, it mentions that the contract was performed under Matrix.
Yes.
Were you with Matrix?
Yes, I was one of the founding partners with Matrix Consulting Group.
Okay, you've been not with him for a while.
For a while.
Okay. And then last question, so, you know, we'll call the references, we're going to hear glowing stuff about all the good work.
I'm sure you will.
And I'm sure you've done good work and that's wonderful, but if I spoke to someone that wasn't on the reference list that had some concerns, what, what do you think those concerns would be?
Well, to be blunt, probably, I'll tell you the answer to a question that somebody asked me in an interview once. They said, how can we be sure, after having spent some time with me in a situation just like this, how can we be sure, and they hired me by the way, that we're going to bring you in here and you're going to manage to like make everybody happy? And they said, John, if you want me to make everybody happy, you should knock like 20 grand off that project and give me two and I'll go buy like beer and hot dogs and rent you some jumpy houses and we'll have like a little staff appreciation party out back.
All right, so you're saying, you tell it like it is.
Yeah, that's, I mean.
If people aren't happy.
I don't really, I don't, I mean, I have a wife that I really am very concerned about or fiance that I'm very concerned about keeping happy. I have some kids that I'm moderately concerned about keeping happy with me sometimes because they know where I sleep and all and some of them are bigger than I am. Other than that, the list is pretty, you know, my mother's in Alaska right now, I'm not even real concerned about keeping her happy with me. It's going to be a month before she's back, she'll forget it by the time she gets here. Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I think that from a town manager's perspective or a town administrator's perspective, they might find that concerning, that I don't have to, I don't have to care about the political things that they have to care about. So I think some of them would worry about that, but that's why they're hiring us.
And then, that's exactly right.
I mean, because I don't have to care. I don't live there, I don't have to worry about that.
Okay, thank you. So my concerns are, and I still haven't heard an answer that makes me feel good yet. We've in the past had problems as to whether the fire EMS budget is the right amount. And that means operationally, we have to know that in fact, everybody's agreed to the way it's run. The number falls out. In the past, we haven't been able to get behind that to where finance committee, whoever, ourselves feel comfortable. So what I'm looking for is a study that comes in and says, we've looked at your operation based on the size of the town, the square, and based on the way you're running it, there's probably some things you can tweak or you should make real changes to. Based on that, I expect that numbers would fall out. If we say everything's going to be permanent and our wage scale is out of whack, then we need to know that. If we have to up it, what's that going to cost? Because at the end, we can't afford a million dollar budget. And we're spending about half that now. But we, maybe we have to spend 100,000 more or maybe we shouldn't be looking at that at all, we should be saying, whoa, this leads us to think we should be partnering with the town. But somehow we have to get to that so we can say, okay, if that's what it takes for Plimpton to run a state, an operation that people will feel good about, the service times are correct, within the budget, et cetera, then the next step is, okay, should we even think about partnering? If we should, what are the questions that should fall out of that? We're not sure that the, we've talked to two towns. The town that looks like it would be more our size, they're not sure they want to do this, they don't want to regionalize, they've made that clear because of the bureaucracy.
Right.
They would be willing to sign some sort of a contract that they would run portions of it. We don't know if that makes any sense at all. Part of it is the dollar value of it.
Right.
But the other part is what happens to the operation? And does the operation, you know, we've got, these are professional people now, you, all these people have to be certified at levels. So in a sense, we have to make sure that the people feel like, yeah, this makes sense for us too. So that whole thing, that stew is what I'm kind of trying to figure out. I don't have the expertise to do it. And that's where we want the consultant to come in and help us.
It is a stew too, I mean, that's a really, that's a really apt description because you can change an ingredient, it's still stew.
Right.
You can change the seasoning and it's still stew and at some point, it doesn't taste as good, but it's still stew, it's still recognizable.
But I want to, with the stew, I want to be able to turn to the town and say, look, we looked at this and we made the decisions based on this.
Right.
If you wanted to spend more money, sure, we can do certain things, but this town is very conservative. And the feeling is, we, we don't have a good way of talking to them and that's the other piece of it. Once we figure out it, how do we, I don't want to say sell it because that implies we're trying to put something over, but we want to be able to go to them and say, hey, we've thought about this.
You don't have a good way of talking to who? The, the community writ large?
Residents, yeah.
Okay. About this topic, you mean? Like a good way of, a good way of structuring that conversation?
Right. I don't think people worry about it now in the sense, okay, there's a budget and if the, you know, if I call, I'm going to get somebody there quickly.
Right.
There's a, there's a bigger conversation that needs to take place.
I mean, I think, I think one of the most valuable things, because a consulting assignment like this is not the end of anything.
Sure.
Right? I've, I've often thought about what I do as trying to put some structure to the Thanksgiving Day family argument that we all know was coming. It's kind of, it happens every year. But if we can put some structure to that conversation, then it hopefully will get past it and maybe the argument doesn't have to happen again next year, or maybe it's a little less vociferous next year and then we can revisit it and go, okay, try to address each of those issues as you, as you go forward and like adults, you can hopefully kind of move past it at some, at some point. And you said an interesting thing about the consolidation issue, which is that if you can, if you can get to the point where you feel comfortable that you're providing the service that you want to and that you're comfortable with the amount of money you're spending, because there is a cost to partnership, whether it's a dollar cost or a just, you know, the pain in the butt cost of being in it. And those are very real costs, I mean, that are going to get borne by people in this room, I mean, at the very least, and I'm sure by other people as well. And to chase, to chase the idea of doing something with a partner simply for the fact, or simply for the, I don't know, the appeal of doing something with a partner and losing sight of the fact that it, that it, yeah, it may have some benefits to it, but it also may have some cost to it. And there are different ways of doing things in partnership with different communities also, where maybe it's taking a step back and saying, okay, well, do we have a hard time getting to this part of the community? Is there somebody else that can get there actually faster than we can? And if they can, is there, is there something that we could do where we could peel off a part of the community and pay somebody to cover that for us?
We're doing that to a certain extent now, only we're, we're covering.
Are you referring to mutual aid agreements?
Well, the, we cover Parta Cava and Parta Kingston.
Right, those are the mutual aid agreements we have.
You have automatic aid agreements with them?
We do, we have automatic run card agreements. Because we were BLS for a long time.
Yep.
They weren't calling us, understandably, because pretty much everything's ALS now anyway. So once we became an ALS service, we started, you know, first, let's get the respect, what is Plimpton doing, who do they have providers?
Yep.
What are their on scene times? And as those things have increased and gotten better, our responses for mutual aid calls have increased. And in turn, the revenue stream coming in, because that really was capped by less than 3,000 residents, we knew.
Right.
You could only recover a certain amount. But since that's happened and since we've, our credibility's grown and our agreements have grown as a result, but then we're now on various run cards in a couple of the communities around us. And calls for service increase, revenue coming in increases, and mutual aid agreements, reciprocal agreements are working much better.
Are they calling you and not even calling their own units?
This is, they're, everybody's busy.
Yeah.
The first town was just Cava, which really started to break in with mutual aid agreements for the ambulance, they're upstream. And they, it was a necessity for them that they. reach out, of course, the towns around them, Plimpton, Middleborough, Lake, those towns are also very, very busy.
Yep.
And they saw what they saw, they saw all of a sudden another ALS service within the region, and they were able to tap into that. Since then, Kingston, also very busy.
Yep.
Reaching out to towns around them, Ducksbury, Pembroke, they're all very busy too. It became a necessity for the chief to create additional districts, two of them along, along our borders, that will facilitate early, early patient intervention.
Yep.
And as a result, our calls have increased, the revenues increased.
And you're getting the transports out of them too.
That's correct.
That's good.
Yeah.
Because if you're not, if you're gonna go, you may as well, you may as well do the ride.
Right. Part of these mutual aid agreements, quite often, it's reciprocity on fire service and things like that, you know, we'll help you, you help us, and so we, we do have very good agreements in place with all the towns. But when it comes to that, the billing, and if the patient's in our truck, of course, we bill.
That's good. Are you billing for no transport responses?
We have, like, like a refusal.
Like a soft bill?
We, we have, we have a fee for refusals, but we're very less than inclined to do that, especially with our residents, because we don't want them to not call us.
Oh, right, right.
So, that's something we've, I think the Board of Selectmen and I have all agreed that we're gonna continue with this time to, it's a $75 fee.
Yeah.
But that's our concern.
So, Mr. trying to describe beautifully our dilemma in making decisions, are you feeling like the work that you would do for us would give us the information we need?
Yeah, man, part of our responsibility is to, wherever possible, to try to put some fiscal impact or dollar amount to those things, right? So if you say, well, we think you ought to add another halftime person or something because you're having a coverage issue, we're gonna say, well, we think it ought to cost this much. If we're, if we see, you know, if we're talking to the chief and he's saying, yeah, we're having a really difficult time filling some of these positions, well, why is that? Well, it's because we can't, you know, we're being outpaid by communities all around us. Well, those are easy phone calls to make, you know, how much you paying your part-time people? Well, if everybody around you is paying 50% more than you are, that's something you need to know and can take into consideration and can try to do something about. And then we would roll that into any fiscal impact analysis that we, that we did.
One of, one of the pieces of that too, is I would like to see some template for reporting. We don't, in the past, our budget process has been just show the cost, irregardless of the revenue stream that's coming in. That makes no sense at all, because even though the cost is going up, the revenue stream, Warren's been able to really push it up, and when you subtract that, doesn't, it's still going up.
The growth in the.
The growth is much less than.
That delta's less than it looks like it is.
And I think one of the problems we've had is, we've never sat down and figured out, okay, let's put this all on one sheet, one page, that it, we, everybody starts to say, this is the way we're gonna look at how we judge the fiscal operational piece.
Yeah, because, in, in some ways, no, I'm not gonna say that. It's interesting, I mean, there's, you, you will hear departments say, well, we should get into EMS because it's gonna, you know, it makes money. Well, it does, it collects revenue. It does not make money the way people think of things, like if you run a business and it makes money, that's a different, that's a different idea than EMS makes money. I mean, EMS offsets and can be a significant contributor to offsetting the impact of running a, a business that you're gonna run anyway.
Yep.
And it's, you know, I think that there's a lot of really good reasons to do fire-based EMS, a lot of them, and that revenue component is, is one of those good reasons.
Well, some of the conversations at times have taken place, like with the financial committee, you know, we don't have, they'll say, we don't have the operational expertise. You know, we're looking at the numbers, and you're asking for a 10% increase, everybody else is getting five. Somehow, we need to structure something that says, yes, we're asking for that, but here's the reason, and it makes sense. Because if it just gets into a, well, it's too high a percentage, you know, then it becomes who has clout, and that's not the way to do it.
I, I did a project for a community in Arizona, not a big community, kind of a funny little, kind of a very funny little place, actually, and they brought us in because they, they had had a, they'd had an unfortunate incident, crime occur, bad, and they got a new, they brought in a police chief to try to address some of the issues that had occurred, and it had a homicide, not committed by an officer or anything, it was terrible and unexpected, and they made some big changes, and the chief, they brought a chief in from outside, and he said, you know, can I get a copy of the strategic plan? There wasn't one. So one of the very first things he and the town manager did was to say, and there were none in the entire town, anywhere, no department. So they brought us in, and in fact, they, I got brought in as a sub through their accounting firm, and we created a structure of, of very simple strategic plans, which they, we did in police, but then they sort of extended through every department in the community. The strategic plan being the precursor to the budget-making process, so that you said, well, here are the, and again, it was very short, I mean, they were very, these were like one-page things, it was great. You know, here are our 10 strategic objectives, you could see them on one page, and then each of the strategic objectives got like a page to it. And you went into the budget, and so, why does this department want 10% versus this one wants two, versus this one wants eight? Well, because we've agreed that these strategic plans are appropriate, and then you go to the strategic plan for that department, and we've agreed this year, we've accepted this year a strategic plan, and here's the things we've agreed as a community that they're gonna do, and these are the things that are driving why these guys get to ask for a little bit more money this year than these guys do. And whether it's, you know, we have a health and safety thing that we're dealing with because we have an opioid crisis, and so we've decided that the focal point for that is gonna be fire rescue, police, and youth services, okay, cool. Those departments get a little kicker because we're gonna help fund, you know, five-town coordinator for opioid issues, or whatever you're doing. Awesome, that explains why they get a little bit more money.
So that's part of what we need, because we can't even have that discussion now.
I think so, I mean, I think, now, I mean, you know, the town manager was like in love with that idea until I said, you know, that this chief is actually gonna show up at budget with this strategic plan in his hand.
Sure.
Like, this guy is not an idiot, and he wasn't, he was a really bright guy, and I said, and he is, by the way, gonna go to the other department heads and convince them to do this, and he's gonna like teach these people how to make your life totally miserable, which he did, it was great, right? But I mean, then you get the I want a dollar and you want a million thing going on, and then when they show up in front of their equivalent of the Board of Selectmen, the budget process entirely changed, because it really became, here's what our vision for this community is, as, right, we had this vision, and it took that vision document thing, and it suddenly became like a real thing, because all of a sudden, that vision document was what, like, you didn't get to have something in your strategic plan, if you couldn't convince the other department heads in the room that that thing came out of that. And then it would rewrite that to make sure that the stuff that was important.
Yep.
And then, you didn't get stuff in your budget if it didn't come out of that strategic plan. And then they would redo these things every year, stuff got done, you didn't get to keep it, it fell off, and then you gotta, you needed to keep refreshing that process.
Well, we're also on the hunt for a town administrator, and that's exactly the kind of thing that we, as we look out, we wanna professionalize in the town. Gentlemen, you, you have questions? Because we've been hugging.
Yeah, I, I think we're in pretty good shape. One of, one of the things that I've seen, and, and various boards that I've worked with over the last six and a half years, was that people don't really understand the nature of the fire service and the fighter department. There are residents in town who believe when they drive by that there were a fully-staffed station like, say, Quincy Fire or Boston Fire, and they, by and large, they expect, of course, when they call 911, that the service will arrive in a better-than-timely fashion.
Right.
And understanding the nature of the workings of it has been a very big challenge to get out to the public, and also, the various boards of Selectmen we've had, we've sat down, and quite, quite often, they wanna learn. And when I took over here, the question posed to me was, how can we bring this forward? And I said, I have a list, it's in my head, and I'll write it down, we'll talk about it. So, we've been able to stay ahead of the curve of, of the increased calls for service, and the need for an advanced life support service, because the towns around us would be happy to come under mutual aid agreements, but they wanted the run, they wanted the
Should, take your money.
And it became a big problem, and, and the various boards have worked with me, and the finance committee worked with us, and brought us along to, we've made great strides. But with that, of course, come increased cost. But what I think I've seen most of, that we stayed ahead of it enough, that we're able to service this community in a timely fashion, in a safe way at the advanced life support level, with good services, and that's something that most everybody would be willing to agree to, provided they understood it better. And that's a difficult part, to understand the nature of us. John Trainer got close with us on understanding it, he came right in the job and said, teach me. And he, to him, he was like, wow, like, it's quite a big deal, it's a lot different than we maybe had thought it was. So the board has been very good like that with, with coming forward and working on different ideas and understanding the nature of it. And that's why what we're trying to do here is get that, a comprehensive study, that is not just coming from the board, it's not just coming from Chief Presari, it's, it's a comprehensive study that we can all sit down and look at, educate ourselves and move in the right direction.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's a great idea, it has to be, it has to be. And so that's what I think we're looking for here.
Good.
Very well put.
And we need you to go back and revisit this, because obviously, that's more than what you thought you were coming here.
Still, you were asking.
Okay. I can do that, I can get back to you in a day or two.
Okay, good.
Perfect.
I know you're trying to get, you're trying to make a decision pretty quickly.
We are, we'd like to make it by the end of this month.
I'm reading your notes, timeframe.
Yeah, what's, yeah, what are we looking at for timeframe?
I mean, honestly, doing holiday math, I mean, really, you're probably looking at something in early December, because you have Thanksgiving that's, gets in the way.
Okay.
But it doesn't get a lot in the way.
Looking for something that is a report?
A final report, yeah, and a presentation you could do in early December too, I mean, it would be kind of concurrent.
Okay.
It may be sooner, some of that depends just on how quickly we can get data and how easy that is.
Right, give us a list, we'll get the information.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds great. I think for myself, I, I love what everybody has said, and I just wanna know that we're spending, you know, we're getting the best bang for our buck with the town's.
I appreciate that.
Money and, and providing the best services that we possibly can. For me, I don't want to sway or impact anything you do, that's why I think we wanted an outsider, for you to come in and explore, and then make a recommendation to us, but on the other hand, I don't want you to leave any stone unturned, and, you know, come back to us with, you know, if, if we need to put more money into the department to make it work, and you've kinda come up with a CIP plan, like we've worked on for other, you know, for the town, to help grow the department in a deliberate and expected way to get us where we need to be, you know, that sounds great. We just need some guidance.
Were you talking about doing police and fire station together at one point?
It was mentioned.
It was.
Yeah.
As a public safety facility a while ago.
But not now.
We've already made that decision, it's, it's moved quite a long.
It's like a weird, I, I do, I do a fair amount of like fire station location work with a couple of different architectural firms, and I just, it was a memory that I had, but I didn't remember from where or from who.
Any more?
Okay.
Any last?
Very good.
Beautiful.
So, you're gonna provide us with?
I will.
A revised proposal based on our discussion tonight?
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it, no, no worries.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
To the proposal, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna take some more water, is that okay?
Sure.
Absolutely.
It's the cup that's, that's the expensive part of.
[laughing]
Thank you both.
Yeah, very nice to meet you, pleased to meet you, sir. Yep, you bet.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming, making the trip.
Oh, my pleasure.
Sitting in traffic?
Thanks, Christine.
To get here?
No, it was fine.
Appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Nice ride, it's at the end, as I mentioned, that's the beautiful part.
Thank you. So you guys gonna hang out?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Are we gonna do another one? Yeah, we are, good.
Eight o'clock.
Eight.
At eight o'clock.
Yeah, so do you wanna go back and do something and come back?
Yeah.
You probably have things to do.
Yes, I, yes, I know. Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Perfect.
Thank you, folks.
Oh, no problem.
Thanks.
Okay, so, let's move on. Community paradigm, executive search for town administrator follow-up. We, looks like just got some communication from the consultants, who is asking for some information and review from us, to keep the process going, so, anything you guys wanna add to?
Looking forward to reading what we just got.
Yeah. So, we need to discuss process at all?
Well, he, there's, we need to discuss a date that he wants.
Oh, he wants to come back in?
Well, no, he's got a date on this that he needs, when the applications are due by. He just says September XX, and then I think he wants us to review this document and provide comments.
I do wanna get him back in though, so we can do a workshop on exactly what, what all the feedback was. I mean, we're, we're seeing this as part of the result, but behind that is probably a lot of stuff that, you know, some of it will be critiques of how the place is run, I'd like to know more about that.
Well, do you wanna do that, and have him come in and discuss this document at one time, or separate pieces?
No, we can do it all at once, I think, but, what do you think, Mike?
I, I, what's running through my head is, I don't wanna spend too much time wordsmithing the document.
Oh, I don't wanna wordsmith it all.
And I, I hate to lose.
Yeah, he's the professional.
Yeah, absolutely. I, yeah, I, I mean, I suppose that, I don't know, I, I mean, we need that feedback at some point, and I, I'm, I'm not quite sure when it should be, and whether it needs to be soon or later, or part of another discussion.
Might it make sense to, to get the feedback, you know, before we start the interview?
Well, yeah, I would want the feedback, just so if there's things that pop out of that feedback, you know, that might lead to questions around in the interviews. The other thing is, what's the next step in between, you know, we're just gonna have all these people come in and we interview them, are we gonna have a committee?
No, 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 he's gonna do the initial screening.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that's right, yeah, he did say that.
Initial screening, I mean, we probably have to be starting thinking about putting together the committee.
The screening committee.
Yeah. But of course, that's a ways away, because he's gonna be collecting these resumes for the next month or so.
Yeah, he's looking for a September deadline, when we want these.
I mentioned that a couple of people, I think one person for sure will wanna get in the mix, so I wanna be able to handle that resume, and there's another person that maybe they came third-hand, so I'll have to find out.
So does that mean inviting him in next week?
I can't do Wednesday night.
Yeah, we already, next Monday night, already, we have appointments at 6:00 PM, 7:00 PM, and 8:00 PM.
He may not be available, and he may feel it's, I don't know if it's.
I don't know if we have to stop him on this, I mean, maybe they can just go ahead and we make, like, two Wednesdays out, if we can do it.
I feel like that, I feel like not slowing this down here.
Yeah.
And, I mean, that discussion can go on, probably combined with forming the search committee and all of that.
Absolutely.
I would just say, we ought to read this, and then we just, unless there's a.
Major stuff.
Yeah, we just say, go.
Okay.
Okay, we'll just send an email. Okay, we'll just send an email.
Well, why don't we determine the date, because we can't deliberate on that. When do you want-
I can't do Wednesdays for a while.
-resumes to, when do you want the resumes to be submitted to him by?
Oh, I think he would tell us that.
No, he's left it blank, he wants us, by 5:00 PM on September, blank, blank.
Oh, good, so he gave us a hint.
Yeah. So, he wants it September.
Uh, I need to look at the calendar.
Do you want the end of the month?
Last day of September is the 30th.
How about if we went, maybe the 29th?
29th is a Friday.
And that's not a holiday, right?
Um, it actually is the eve of Yom Kippur, I don't think that's going to be a problem for Bernie.
Okay, so that's not a holiday, okay. Does that sound okay to you?
For some people it is.
Well, then, do you want to go the 28th?
Yeah, sure.
That gives him the whole month of September?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
All right.
All right, and then we'll look at the rest, and if nothing else is glaring, we'll just, okay.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so we'll let him know that we are recommending, if it's okay with him, September 28th.
Unless, if he has a different suggestion on that, I would absolutely defer to his opinion.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Good.
All right, so, next is climate opportunities, fire clerk interviews, is there any update on that?
No, I meant to ask.
We'll hold it back.
Yeah, we'll bring that up.
Okay, so let's hold that until the chief comes back. All right, hire consultants, we had our first interview just now, and we'll have another one at 8:00 tonight, anything on solar?
Have not heard from Raymo, Rayo.
Okay. All right, so, nothing, all right, townhouse, legal strategy meeting follow-up, permit application process and requirement update, so that would be the small, um-
A small event.
Small event, thank you.
As, as you may have seen, we haven't heard, I wrote to Rich today, he responded, he's working on it.
That was my question, was which permit application process were we-
The small event.
Thank you.
Yeah, and what about clarification meeting on remote participation?
We got that, um, we got that, and unfortunately, the remote participation does not solve the quorum issue.
Okay.
Which really is unfortunate.
Okay. All right, Wolf Rock Farm follow-up, I don't know if we've got anything.
Isn't, the chair of Board of Health was in and said there was nothing new.
No update, okay. All right, Town Council access protocol, we touched on this last week about, um-
So, you guys convinced me, okay? I think the only thing we have to do is what we mentioned last week, which is maybe let the boards know that in emergencies, what the process is.
Okay.
But on that, I, I agree with what you, last week.
Okay. All right, do you want to do, if they don't hear from me within several hours, that, you know, they can contact John, because, you know, if I'm traveling or gone, we certainly don't want things to slip through the crack, that, you know, contact another member of the board?
So, we should put something out that says, you know, "You first," and then we'll, you know, maybe-
Yeah, if you don't hear from me, yeah.
Me next, and let's just call the vice chairman-
Perfect.
-because it'll change next year and-
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Including our, our cell phones, probably.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
Okay, perfect, so-
Ken? I have a question with regard to the bylaw committee and what we talked about, and, and the clarifications we will ultimately seek about, you know, which councils for general bylaw review, and how soon we're going to know that, because you saw the pipeline that I made a graphic of, which is, you know, we start with the draft bylaws, and magically outcome the warrants in March, right? And there's at least four or five subroutines in there, groups to be met with and talked, legal, planning, FinCom.
So, yeah, but we left it that Rich Bowen and Alan were going to get together, and I guess that Rich Bowen was going to come to a meeting.
Right.
So, what do you need beyond that?
Well, um, there's a question about, um, what I'd like to do, and have agreed to do for the committee, is over the next five weeks, set up a process for each of the five other stops on the way, which means meeting with each of the groups, I'll be sending out a memo, interviewing one or more people from each of the groups, whether they be FinCom, Planning Board, um-
But what's the legal implication of that?
Well, as you recall in the pipeline, on the graphic, there was legal review from almost beginning to end, as a result of what's happened this past year. So, that needs to be scheduled in, in the pipeline, I mean, we're actually-
But how can we do that until Alan and Rich Bowen and you guys have had that conversation?
Well, and you've got KP Law scheduled, too. You're going to be having both of them meeting with you.
Right, and I guess I'm getting some pressure to figure out, I understand there's, there's some trade-offs in some selections in the process, but I'm also, in talking to the five or so groups, the Board of Selectment is, is one of those, and I'd like to talk with one or more of you here, or in the next couple of weeks, about the follow-ons in the meeting we had about who does what, but now we're building a calendar, and at what point do you, as a group, want to get a sense of the slate that's being put together in the remaining X number of meetings, less than 10 that we have currently scheduled, not that we can't start speeding them up. So, I understand the liaison to the bylaw committee that we currently have for specific questions, and then we have this general question of Firm A and Firm B, but within that is the preferences for the schedule for each of the five stops on the way after the bylaw committee, which I intend to meet with and interview, as well as your interest for knowing what, when, over the next seven months, eight months.
Well, my vision of this is that Rich is a strategist. Rich is not going to be writing any opinions, because we have Town Council, and Town Council is going to be reviewing the warrant, so, and you guys feel free to, you know, say whatever ideas you have, but Rich is more of a consultant at this point, I think if something's glaring, like the sign was last time, he probably would have said, you know, "I don't think you should pursue that," or, or if you are going to pursue this, this may be the way you want to handle it, and I can give you some suggestions, but when you're looking for things to be reviewed and opinions, I think you need to go to KP Law.
I, I agree with you on, on that. Working backwards, and I'll summarize, for each of the four or five sub-steps, I want to get their understanding of the calendar and their preferences, we don't have a Dale that's going to walk these through from January on, and we're kind of revisiting it, so I will be talking with each of the group and working out a schedule that they all envision and seek and desire, and holding them up to the light, because, um, working backwards, you know, FinCom may want to see anything that has dollars in it, and not want to see anything that doesn't have dollars, and they may want to see it in this month.
Mm-hmm.
And that's important, because that's the second sort of cutoff to our draft cutoff to, sorry, our cutoff for drafting, you know, drafting draft bylaws. And Planning Board is huge, and Town Council is somewhere in there, which is, at what point do they want to see something as attached, before it's worked on, after it's worked on, at what point? That's important to know for their schedule. And what I was saying earlier was, and your preferences for what you'd like to know is currently making its way through the pipeline, as things get drafted and sent through the pipeline off on these little routines, you have some idea of when you'd like to know what they are, once, twice, three times between now and-
You know, I can't answer that question myself, until I see what these subcommittees are recommending.
Mm-hmm.
You know, once you can lay it out and say, "This is what they're doing, and this is the line, and this is where they'd like to see legal help," I think then it becomes easy for us to say, "Makes sense," or "We got an issue with it."
Well, I think, right, I agree with you, too, and there's only two levels, there are two levels to the question, one is approving the Town Council package for review, and the legal involvement, the other one is your own personal sense ahead of that, of what's with the pipeline for any reason, or, in approving it, I guess, well, it's not approving it in an individual, I, we talked about blocks, you know, hours in a month, so, if we have three warrants, six warrants, nine warrants-
But you got to, you got to come in and make those recommendations, we don't know.
Which, what the warrants are, or what the-
What the warrants are, and the hours that you think you need to make sure that you're getting the proper advice.
Well, the block of hours is a big number, yes.
Because you're meeting with Town Council, she should be able to, Amy Kessel, when you meet with her, she should be able to say, "I think this one will take a certain amount of time to get this one squared away, this one, you know, whatever, whatever ones you're working on." I don't think we would want to be involved until these are vetted by Council, whether or not she, these even pass muster, you know, if, if they're legal, and, I mean, there's no point in us getting involved until you guys kind of have a finished, rough product, and then, you know, I think we'll want to know.
Okay.
But Council should be able to help you plan money and time-wise, how long it's going to take-
For that.
-to move these through with them.
Right, and, and they're one of the cars in the train that we're trying to push through the pipeline.
And they've already said they will meet with you.
It's going to be important to be able to quantify that, you know, so that if you, if the hours drop out, because we've got this Cisco valuation, that's going to take half our dollars right off the bat, and then, plus what you're doing, plus some other things we've got in executive session, the legal budget is not looking very robust right now.
Um, and I understand that, and, and as the engineer, I'm building the pipeline regardless of what you put through the pipeline.
Great, great, that's the way it should be.
And, and one alternate analog, and I'll, I'll stop, is that the group is still trying to feel the elephant in the dark in the closet, you know, and which appendage they've got, because the ideas for bylaws are dozens and-
Oh, I'm sure.
-thousands, and, and we're building a Cuisinart, so today's product is carrots, you know.
That's why I think that discussion with Rich Bowen and your group has to take place, because I think he's very pragmatic, and he's, I agree with what Christine said, you know, he's our strategist for preventive law. Make sure we don't go too far, but then, when you need the, you go to KP for the expertise that they have in there.
Right. We have to size, you know, the, the Cuisinart, right now, they're trying to, in my opinion, put an elephant through the Cuisinart, and it's, it's not going to fit.
Well, another thing with Rich, too, is you may not be reinventing the wheel here, and if you have ideas that other towns have already vetted, that are working, he might be able to get those bylaws for you, and at least we've got a starting point with KP-
Oh, right.
-rather than having to have them write the whole thing.
The narrow road, right.
And KP will do the same thing, if they've already done this with another town, they should be able to help you out with, with bylaws, so, you know, and it's a very good possibility what you're working will have been done, at least somewhere else.
Yeah, we're getting lots of people gathering, all the other towns between, we are drowning in draft by, or real bylaws from other towns, the process is, how do you focus, you know, hundreds and hundreds of bylaws, and other stuff from other towns, and shuffle the cards, and-
Yeah, and put together what's best with left and right.
Anyway, thank you for your input, and I will be talking to the other groups in the pipeline.
Good.
I promised Alan that by the end of September, we'll have an update to the pipeline, which are all the little shunts, and what their preferences are, so that we don't have, you know, nothing in the harbor of the Cuisinart.
Good, good.
So, you meet what, the second and?
Uh, no, first and third.
First and third.
Thursday.
I think you've got Amy on the 21st of September already. We were hoping to do Rich on the 7th, but he's not available, he had another commitment, and I believe Amy already committed to the 21st, but check with Alan.
Yeah, I have to talk to Alan, because one of the things I threw out was an offer from Tom Millius, who is, tried twice to have a bylaw review committee in Halifax and failed for lack of attendance, and part of the problem was, it was a group of four, and, uh, he's gotten to the point where he's personally chosen to take the whole zoning chapter from Halifax and rewrite the whole thing, cover to cover, himself-
Wow.
-as a selectman, and so Alan said, "Well, could we invite him to the meeting?"
Sure.
And I, and he has offered us his-
Fantastic.
-you know, draft, and some stuff, and I, it, it may have been the meeting after Rich, but we'll work him in, and if it's Amy, fine, we'll have him at the next one, but the, the point is, not only do we have, we have Bob Carling, who offered to come and talk about his thing, which is good, because we're producing 25 pages-
Can't do it in the vacuum.
And, yeah, 25 pages of edits to the first 25 pages, and, and they're all zoning, and, you know, unless he's in and on board and willing to read and work with Ann, who interestingly is working with the Planning Board to strengthen their work and relationship, and-
Terrific.
I, I'm very, very pleased on several levels, including I can now talk to her about their wants and wishes, because they have to have a hearing for every bylaw.
Yeah, they do, and he's owning.
And, you know, half the people say, you know, five, eight, 10, half people are going, "30, 50, 100."
Well, it's not going to be easy, you guys inventing the template, that's what we chatted you to do.
Plugging away at it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken, very much. Okay, small town administrator management 2018 membership info, that's a mouthful.
So, that was in the correspondence of Mr. Ploos, and, uh, I don't see a need for it, but I didn't know if-
I, I agree, I'd wait until we have a town minister.
Let's wait, okay.
And then we definitely should be-
Can I make a comment, so I can run upstairs and harass the boys? The website header says that you're closed on August 14th and 28th, and the dates to remember, says open meetings unless otherwise noted, are the 28th, and the 11th.
I think it said the townhouse is closed, but the Board of Select can meet every Monday. So, the townhouse is closed every, every other Monday night, but we meet every Monday.
Oh.
Yeah.
No summer hours for us, there's too much work to do.
Really? That's not, that doesn't come across in there, it sort of implies everybody except the select, okay, thank you for the-
You're very welcome.
I was going to say, how can you meet and not meet? Thank you.
All right, you want to jump to correspondence?
I do. So, I've been checking correspondence while, or checking the mailbox while Ploos is away, and we'll continue to do that this week, so not too much here. This is a letter from Rocky Harvest, apparently, uh, one of our letters was sent to their 10-year-old address, they're responding to complaints about June 23rd.
Right.
I guess you've seen this?
No.
Essentially, they're saying there were only three tankers that took water that day, well within the hours of operation, and if we know something different, to let them know.
Perfect, so we should update our records then, if we've got an old address.
I think maybe KMP did that, put the wrong address.
Okay.
All right, vendor warrants paid, App River 407, Belmont Springs $7, Steve Sorrow Supplies $10, Comcast 105, US Bank 293, Odeon Supply 163, Verizon 341, Eversource 419, US Bank 155, Eversource 1800. I'm going to do these, you know those guys on the radio that read all the disclaimers? Next week, we're going to start with (mumbling). No, actually, I mean, that's serious, and you guys should hear what we spent money on that, so it'll be, it'll be intelligible. Save the date for Blue Cross Blue Shield, meeting for elected officials and community leaders, Friday, October 13th, 9 to 12, light breakfast, that's in Rainham, unfortunately, I can't do that, I'm not sure we necessarily-
Have to go.
Have to go.
Okay.
This is from the Plymouth Philharmonic Orchestra, thanking us for our grant of $200.
Really?
I bet it was from cultural optimism.
Ah, that makes sense, okay.
Shouldn't we get seats?
Huh?
Shouldn't we get seats?
Yeah, there you go.
That's a beautiful building.
Memorial?
Yes.
It is, boy, it's a fun place, it is.
Yeah.
We went to Christmas Pops, I think, last year, it was really enjoyable.
The May one is always kind of a, the American standards, which is really good.
Um, this is a letter from the Atwood family, letting us know about a change of ownership of a property on Prospect Street. I have a feeling this probably needs to go to the treasurer for rebilling, so I'll, I'll get that done sometime this week.
Thank you.
Um, Pumped and Express, uh, interesting headline, how many lawyers does it take? That has to do with...
Sounds like a lightbulb joke.
Um, we'll let that one pass.
Deborah must have written that.
Yeah, that was harder. Um, oh, on page three, there's a lovely letter from former selectman Colin Thompson.
I saw that, that was very nice.
What a thoughtful person, and what a great writer she is, a real asset to this town. Centerfold is about cold-blooded friends visiting the Holmes Public Library, it's a, um, a genteel way to say snakes, um, nice photos. Last page, um, B, a reader at Plumton Library, apparently, there's what's the buzz and a chance to sign up as a reader, nice thing.
Very nice.
Um, all right, and I think, um, with pleasure, I can report that that completes correspondence.
Okay, all right, next, um, dates to remember, we're meeting on the 28th, and then we'll, are we going to be off the week of, um, Labor Day? Don't you guys want to meet on Tuesday? I'm going to be out of town, but if you want to meet, I mean, do you want to see what happens?
I'm glad to do it if needed, uh, you're out of town the whole week?
Mm-hmm.
But we could, we could do all kinds of stuff while she's away.
Oh my gosh, you guys would have so much fun.
Good bonus house a raise. I want $2.
Um, you know, I think...
I think we could skip one.
I mean, we've met every week this summer.
Let's skip, if something comes up next week, we can always change it.
Perfect, yeah. You guys could post it and do whatever you needed to do.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so, um, with that being said, we're planning on taking off the week of Labor Day, but if something comes up that, uh, requires the board's attention, we'll schedule a meeting, and then, then our next meeting will be 9/11. So we've got more consultants coming on the 28th, both at 6:00 and 8:00, and, um, we'll have an executive session at 7 o'clock with Ellen Hutchins on the 28th.
Okay.
For a strategy session. Okay, um, board's goals for coming year, financial management, I heard from Monica, she has, uh, is getting the final draft of our, um, plan from, um, the group of her team that she's working with to put this together, and she hopes to have it to me tomorrow, so as soon as I get it, I'll send it off to you guys. Um, anything on public safety?
Uh, I think the meeting Wednesday night, and I'll attend that.
Okay.
Before, um, this best practices, I just want to, on cable, um, so, under financial management, we put in, and we got that grant, we put in technology, and we got that, I think now we can put in for best practices, and I would suggest that we put in the fire, EMS.
Based on, um, his suggestion.
And the reason I say that is, Council and Group actually got their, uh, the town they did it with, I think it was Southampton, they put in and got a best practice grant for that, for the fire EMS, exactly what we're doing.
Okay.
So I, I think we got a shot. I had written to Sean Minor, uh, Minor, I think that's his...
Sean from the DLS?
No, who's, DOR.
Um, I think there's two Shons now.
Yeah, um, so I had written to him, asking if we were, um, qualified for that, and at the time, it was back about a couple of months, and he said, if it's still in the FY '18 budget, once the governor signs it, then yes, there's no reason you couldn't go forward, so I think we've got a good shot. So I'll take the lead on that.
So would this be for looking at, um...
Comprehensive fire EMS study.
So using that to pay for them instead of what we're doing?
Right, same as we did with the, uh, technology.
Okay, all right.
Unless you think there's a better...
Well, would it, I wonder if you could do that, and, um, the consolidation, if that's the recommendation that they make?
Oh, I'd put it all, wrap it all up.
Wrap it all up?
Yeah, it's all fire EMS.
Yeah, it's all fire EMS, it would just be the, the follow-up piece to this.
So is that a rolling acceptance, um, of, of the grant?
No, this is, uh, from the DOR, it says, uh, "We are pleased to be able to offer the three programs again. The best practice is one, uh, program, efficiency and regionalization grant is two, and IT, information technology grant is the third. This year, the best practice program is dedicated to municipalities that did not apply in fiscal year 2017. We did not apply for that. Uh, the information technology grant program is also returning, it will be open to municipalities that did not receive an IT grant, well, we received one, so we're not disqualified."
I love that piece of it.
And the efficiency and regionalization grant is really open to all municipalities, regional school districts, regional planning agency, anything that's regional they're looking for. Now, there might be something down in planning, or zoning, or somewhere, that would make sense, I don't know.
You may even have to break up the fire EMS, one towards, um, the efficiency and regionalization with them again, and then one with just the project they're doing now.
Well, I think, we'll see how the other three go, but I think, when he comes back, he's talking about, I hope, he's going to put in there that, you know, we'll measure how you're doing it now, make recommendations if you're standalone, and then if you were to go forward with partnering, here's the things that would, you would need to be talking about.
Well, and I'm sure that, um, these, this grant would be available, again, at a later date, and, uh...
Well, if we put in this year, and actually, one is for the best practice, we'd then have to wait another year, you know.
Mm-hmm. What do you think?
Do you want, I mean, we don't have to make this decision tonight.
I, I, I guess I'm not understanding the timeframe, I, I, I can't imagine that we'd be receiving this grant in time to pay for...
No, but it's the same thing we did with the technology, we put it in the warrant.
Yep.
And we also submitted the grant.
Yep.
Went to town meeting, got approved in the warrant, then it got approved in the grant.
Yep.
So now we're going to pay everything out of the grant that we can, and not use the town meeting money, so it goes back to free cash. This would be, in my, the same thing.
Okay.
We've already got it in the warrant, it was approved.
Oh, oh, oh.
If we get the grant, we spend it out of the grant, and then the warrant article just goes back to free cash.
Yeah, but I, I, I mean, I guess my concern, some of these are saying they're going to want some of their money within a few, a couple of months, I'm not sure we're going to know about the grant in, in that time.
We'd pay it out of the warrant article if we have to. Barbara has been willing to work a little with this, okay?
Okay.
And obviously, she would be the, one of the gates, probably the first gate, to say, is this kosher or not?
So on the bigger level, uh, great.
Yeah.
Thank you for...
Go for it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so public safety, technology, um, anything do you want to add?
No, I'm, I'm remiss, I, I have to get the EMS addresses over to, uh, Mike, I thought Tara was doing it, and I talked to Tara, and she said, I've already given them to you, so, so I kind of let that go for, I'll get it out this week.
All right, um, grants, I did hear back from Heidi, she said, um, summer really would have been ideal, she said, I'm starting to get really busy now, and I said, well, you know, we're, our schedule is open, let us know what works best for you, if you're able to carve out some time for us, we meet on Monday nights, and if not, then, um, how about just, uh, a, a phone conversation to learn more about your program, so, she hasn't gotten back to me.
Okay.
All right, um, volunteerism, anything?
No, just haven't had time to really concentrate.
Well, it's just kind of on here, but...
No, it's good, it's, it's good, we think about it every week, even though every week we don't get to it.
Some of these things, you know, all of a sudden, we'll be able to put some time to it.
True. Okay, minutes, um, we've got 8/7/17 from Bree, and then 8/14/17 from Mark.
Um, I don't think, I haven't seen the 8/7s from Bree.
I haven't either.
Nope.
I don't think so.
Okay, so let's hold those.
And...
I thought I was missing one.
Hmm.
All right, and I saw Mark's, and Mark's, yours looked great.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from 8/14 as written?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay.
All right, so I will send those to Bree.
All right, do you, um, want to take a recess for about, um, 15 minutes until...
You want to do rave and rants, just to get it behind us, because then we can get out after the consultant.
Yeah, sure, absolutely, okay, so what's yours?
So my rave is, uh, in these troubled times where, at the US and state level, it seems like too much craziness is the Red Sox. Thank God for the Red Sox, because they're winning, and that's always a great thing, they're five games up on the Yankees, and that's even better, uh, so, let's enjoy it, because there's too many other things going on, not to...
Go Sox!
Yeah.
Um, my raves are, um, the eclipse, I hope everyone got a chance to see it, it was, um, it was pretty amazing, even, um, you know, it wasn't a, a full eclipse, but the, the little bit that, that was, it was, um, it was a really neat thing. Where I work, they, um, brought out the welding masks, and they brought out the, the welding, um, uh, it's, oh, it's a barrier, so, uh, you could look at it through the welding masks, and this welding, um, netting, and, yeah, it was, it was neat, it was really neat, it was fun, we all were outside, uh, watching the eclipse. Um, and my second one is, um, the Boston Freedom Rally, there was a lot happening in, um, Boston, and we had, um, differences of opinions, um, you know, meeting at the same time, and, you know, it great, it was great.
Great turnout, too.
Great turnout, um, very few incidents, which is wonderful, I mean, there's always some people that I think go out to, um, to stir the pot with these, and are looking for a fight, and that was, um, a very, very, very small percentage of it, and it was just, it was, it was nice to watch on TV, it was, um, it was really nice, I think they did a great job in letting people get out and, um, express their different opinions, and things were handled very well.
Kudos to the Boston Police Department, too.
Absolutely.
They did a great job.
And I'm sure they were coordinated with the mayor, and, uh, you know, it just, they really did a fantastic job, keeping it all together.
Uh, so my rant is, or no, no rant, my rave is actually your comments last Monday night, comments about the difficult times, um, the challenges, um, and they were really heartfelt words I heard about diversity and the challenges, and as much as we all get in our heads, I heard the heartfelt part and, uh, and was, uh, very moved, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, so you want to take a recess now?
Take a break.
All right, so we'll take a, um, 15-minute recess, we've got, um, the Matrix Consulting Group coming in at 8:00 to meet with us, so, um, are we ready? We'll be back. All right, now being 8 o'clock, we are back, and we have Robert Finn from the Matrix Consulting Group coming in to, um, to speak with us. John, did you want to speak first?
Sure. Um, I think we, we didn't flush out when we sent you an invitation that we're looking for comprehensive fire EMS services, partly because we're kind of new at this ourselves, but we're really trying to, uh, understand how the operation is run today versus where it should be going in the next three to five years.
Okay.
Partly so we can explain it to our residents, also so that internally, we can, you know, the numbers fall out in terms of the budgeting, et cetera, once we know the operational parameters we're operating under. So that, we're really looking for that to be part of this study. Separately, our, an add-on is, um, we've thought about going with ambulance, a private ambulance, but last time we looked, that was very expensive, seems like it still is, but at least we need to get a number. And then the, beyond running ourselves, is partly, maybe partnering with a local town, an adjoining town. We're not sure if that makes sense, uh, we've talked to two towns, one that might make sense, has no interest in regionalization, they would only want to contract with us, so in effect, either fire or EMS, or both would be, some mix would be done, say, at nighttime. We have no idea if that makes sense, or what the cost structure of that would be. So we're really looking to you as the experts to come in and tell us, as you go through the thinking, here's what you need to be looking at, and we want to make sure the chief is on board, and his professionals are on board.
So, good thing is, doing this as often as we do, and across the country, there's, there's one thing that we always know going into a study, one is, there's no RFP that's perfect, and two, there, there's no proposal that's perfect. So we start off with a flexible approach, and, and interviews, asking those questions of, okay, what brought about the need for this, what are you looking for, what does it could look like at the end of it, so, that way, we capture all that upfront, and we don't miss it at the end where you say, well, I was hoping you were going to tell me something about what it would cost to contract with an ambulance, I was like, ah, I didn't know we were looking at that, so, so as long as we get, get all that upfront, um, the good thing is, we always do it not to exceed price, so we're on the hook, not you. Um, you know, any scope creep, or things that take a little longer than we guessed, it's, it's fine, we're not the type of firm that comes back to you and says, well, that's not exactly the way we understood it, so we're going to have to, you know, amend this or do that. It would only be if you, you know, went in a completely different direction, and we're like, whoa, this can't be done for, for what we're talking about, but I think everything you said is, is a normal part of, of a master planning, or strategic planning for, for fire service, um, looking for those regional consolidation opportunities, or cooperative efforts, or whatever it looks like, uh, in this area, how it's going to best work for you, um, as well as, are there opportunities to contract with private agencies, or, or those types of things. Typically, if your call volume's not really high, then those ambulances are expensive, because you got two things that they're weighing on, and one's, first is the payer mix, you know, how much are we going to be able to recoup from collections, and then the second is, how many calls are we going to run? And there, there's always a balance of where they put units versus where calls may occur, and, you know, sometimes the service level declines don't make it worth the, even if there are cost savings, because, because you wind up with a decrease in service level, so, but we're happy to look into all that.
Okay.
Um, about us, um, the Matrix Consulting Group, we, uh, we only do government consulting, we focus on, on government consulting, mostly at the local and county level, occasionally, there'll be some sort of a state study, we've done work for the United Nations, but those are very rare events. We've always had an office in, in the Boston area since, since the firm was, was founded. Our company president, this is really where he wants to live, and for some reason, he found himself back in California, so, so he makes the cross-country trip quite often to, uh, get back, but he's always, he's always threatened to come back and, and work in the Boston area again, because it's really where he, he, uh, he likes it the best. So, all of our project teams have people that specialize in the public safety disciplines. Um, I'm a retired fire and police chief, we are a public safety agency, so I had the fortunate opportunity to get to do both, um, five years as fire chief, and then three years as police chief, and get to see how different those two services are, especially when you're trying to bring, bring them all together, um, and then we bring in the other public safety personnel with us, as well as, people are just focused on consultants, so, the, you know, we've got an in-house GIS team, and they do the maps, and they do that, that type of analysis, so that we can look at, okay, if you did contract nighttime coverage, and this is the station, and they're responding from here, instead of where your fire station is, what does that look like? Um, so we can, you know, quickly change maps on the fly, we can, we can adjust and do all that, because it's, it's in-house people, we're not contracting with an outside firm to do that. And then, uh, our data analytics folks that, that look at everything and run, run the data, um, all of our studies are focused on extensive stakeholder input, we, we come to the town, we spend time in the town, we interview the chief, we interview the people doing the jobs, if there's partner agencies that are potential partner agencies, we go interview them, we talk to them about what it, what it can look like, and, and make sure that we, we get the local knowledge, um, everything that we, we do is based on your data, your town, um, and then the recommendations are focused around that unique environment, because every town, and the way they provide services, and the, and the way the community expects services to be provided are slightly different. Um, you know, if you're in a metropolitan area, they want career people and really fast response times, when you get more rural, they're okay with longer response times, um, some are okay with, well, in the daytime, we have the most calls, that's when the paid people should be here, and if volunteers have to respond at night, it takes a little longer, we're okay with that. So it's, it's really making sure that you're meeting community expectations, more so than, than you're meeting national best practice targets, because you are not going to be an NFPA 1710 city. So it doesn't make sense, if, if I came in here and said, that's what you need to achieve, you know, you should kick me out and, uh, send me packing. So we, we have to make sure that when we're looking at, at, at not just best practice, but what's reasonable, and, and what's, what's an acceptable service level. So are you doing that? And if, and if that answers yes, and the community's not knocking down your door saying, what's taking so long, why is this happening, and why is that happening, then the community is accepting of that as a standard, too. Um, and it's interesting, in the last couple of years, the accreditation folks have moved that way, where they've taken... that way, where they've taken all the standards out and said, you know, your baseline is whatever you're currently doing. And it's our job to measure whether that meets your community's expectations, not whether you're able to meet a NFPA guideline when it's, you know, it's not a standard, it's a, it's a guideline. And then we always put in implementation plans so that, so that you guys know how to implement it, when to implement it, what, what's the short-term needs that are immediate higher priorities and what are some longer-term lower priorities. And we work with you throughout that process. So everything starts with the interviews, where we come in and get to know you. Then we move into data and analyze it and present a document that's just facts. These are our factual understanding. You have one fire engine, you have one ambulance, it's staffed with these many people that work these hours and this is what your budget looks like and, and just, here's the station network, here's who provides mutual aid to you and that you provide mutual aid for. And, and we just lay it all out, just facts, so that then you can come back and say, no, it's not four of those, it's two of those and it's, it's four of these. Oh, okay. So we make those corrections to make sure they're fact-based. Then we move into the deeper analysis and looking at, okay, how well are you doing? How well does this meet what the expectations are we were hearing about when we were doing the interviews? How will it meet, how well does it meet generally accepted standards for, for performance of a like organization to this? You know, a more rural community, suburban and rural in nature and not, not urban in nature. So how well are you doing compared to that? And we bring out that issues list saying, okay, we, here's, here's some, here's some findings and here's some ways we can go with that. Talk through it, collaborate with you, find out what makes the most sense, you know? It looks like regionalization is a real good thing here because of X, Y, Z. Do you want us to keep running down that path? Yes, keep going down the path. Okay. So, so we keep doing that. And that way, when the report comes, you're not shocked by any findings or recommendations in the report, because we've already laid them all out with you and, and then talked through what the potential options are or which directions we can go as a result of these findings. Then the draft report comes out, again, you, you review that, make comments. We edit or adjust as needed, get a final report and then come back and present it to, to the town in a public meeting if you so desire, so that the, the public has a chance to hear about it. As I said, we're, we're a national firm, but we have a lot of experience in the Northeast, New England, currently doing, or finishing a study in Westport, Connecticut, and then just started one in New Rochelle, New York. And also, since typing this up, just got, oh, there it is, in Billerica. So last week, we, we found out that, we did a presentation for them and we're, we're selected for that. So, so local, Billerica's probably going to start mid, mid-September-ish, so, so it's a good time. We'll be between New Rochelle and, and on the north side of Boston and, or on the south side of Boston and Billerica on the north side of Boston. And you guys, right between the two, it's, it's pretty easy to just bounce around and, and visit at different times if we need to just do a, a northeast swing. The project team is Richard Brady, he's our firm president. He's been doing this for 35-plus years and it's, it's all he's ever done is, is government consulting. So he's not a, he's not a former fire chief or police chief or public safety executive. He's a, he's a government consultant and focuses on quality, timeliness of deliverables and keeping us on budget. So, you know, with the, with the updates. I'd be the one managing the project and the lead analyst, the person you would see. Terry Lewis and myself would be the two you'd see the, the most onsite in terms of doing the work and interacting with your folks. And then you got Ian and Art that, that'll be more behind the scenes, doing GIS and data work and, and providing some input. Always put Art on our New England teams because he was a, a fire chief in Massachusetts, so he's a credentialed Massachusetts fire chief. And there's some, some unique things to Massachusetts where you got to make sure you're not, you're not getting sideways with the rules. So, so I always bring him in to make sure that our, our recommendations are solid for, for Massachusetts that aren't going to, you know, get us tripped up anywhere. All of our studies are fact-based and jurisdictionally specific and that's where, when I talk about coming in and spending time onsite, getting your data and not just looking at it as a one-size-fits-all, oh, this is a town of 10,000 people. Well, let's pull out the 10,000 people, you know, version. It's, it's, you know, we, we don't have those. We, each one is, is written on their own and they start, start with the same process and that old-fashioned way of consulting where we're here, we're talking with you, we're interacting and it's not just, well, send us a bunch of data and we'll, we'll put it through the supercomputer and tell you what it says. So we want to make sure that we know, know you guys and know what the community expects and, and what, what good looks like for you, so that at the end, we can build that for you and show you that, that next five to 10 years of, of how you can build on what you've started, continue to improve and hopefully find some efficiencies and ways to either save costs or avoid costs as you, as you move down the road, so that, you know, you're not, you're not spending any taxpayers' money that, that doesn't need to be spent in that way. And, and what you're doing is the most efficient and effective use of those taxpayer dollars because the fire service is expensive. The trucks are expensive, the people are expensive, you know, and if, they're, it's not one that generates a ton of money. So, so you always want to make sure that whatever you're spending, you're doing it the right way for the community. And then as I said, we would look through your current system performance, compare you to, to established baseline and benchmark performance standards, look at, look at what, what can be done differently, look at how, how community-specific your needs are, what, what needs do you have here that, that may drive things a little bit different. Sometimes you'll, even in an environment like this, you'll, you'll have a high-risk target hazard, somebody who's producing fertilizer, you know? And that, that one down in West Texas, you know, that fertilizer plant that blew up and blew up half the town, a unique risk. I mean, if you've ever been there, you're driving down I-35 and there's nothing, nothing on either side of the highway. But, but that was a unique high risk to them. So we always talk about what are your identified target hazards? Do you have any of those risks? So that, so that we can set maybe a different standard for that one than for the rest of the town. You know, it'd be like, so if somebody says there's a fire here, it's not just us showing up. You know, that automatically generates triggers that, that a lot of people come because we got to get on it quick and put it out. So, so we learn about those unique things. And then just figuring out how you can be the most effective and efficient organization possible with your current restraints. So the, the scope of work for the study, the way we understood it from my phone conversation with Mr. Trainer, is a little different than kind of what we're talking about today and that's fine. Like I said, we're flexible. And those extras or, or other items to look at can just be rolled in very quickly. So, so we're looking at how well the organization's doing, as well as what do they need to do moving forward? And then with that, having a lens toward, okay, some, some regional cooperative efforts and also the potential to partner with private agencies, if, if any of that makes sense. And again, we'll collaborate with you guys throughout the process to make sure none of that's missed.
One of the, the capital asset section, one of the reasons we're looking at this is because we're in the process of putting up a police station. Down the road, there's a question of whether we renovate the existing fire station or put up a new one. So we would, we don't want a recommendation on that, but we would like to know, I think just looking at the building quickly, is there something inherent in there that we ought to be thinking about now?
Yeah, so when we look at the, those capital assets, we're looking at them from a workplace safety perspective, condition of the building, are there any significant deficiencies we find just by looking at the, that you need to be aware of?
Yeah, that's what I think.
You know, something where you say, whoa, this thing, it looks like the foundation's failing. Or I did a study in Bedford, New York, and they had a, a bowling alley below the apparatus bay, but there were chunks of concrete laying down there, nobody was really using it. And I was doing, doing the tour of the station, looking, I was like, okay, now, and they said, well, yeah, we've tried to reinforce it once. I was like, you may want to get them back out here again. I mean, I'm not a structural engineer, but there's a lot of cracks in the building and there's some separation and definitely signs that something may be going on. And there was a hole, should we stay here or move? And I think an easy thing for us to do on that is if you've identified a potential site, is GIS it. So today, this is what travel times look like from your existing site, this is what it looks like a half mile down the road.
Yeah. That would be here in any case.
Yeah. Does it, does it change anything or not? If it significantly changes things, maybe that this site is still better.
Yeah.
But looking at both is definitely something that's worthwhile. So as, as I said, with the, our methodological overview is, is getting that extensive input from, from the elected officials, appointed officials, fire department personnel, if there are any local stakeholders you'd want us to meet with.
How many people would you normally consider to talk to or is it all over the map?
It just really depends on what you come up with. We'll determine how many of us show up and for how many days. So the, you know, if, if, if you want little group meetings in the evening, you know, invite the citizens in, or if you want a citizen survey, an online survey to allow them to just provide input, you know? Whether they're satisfied with the services or, or they think there's service level improvements, any of those things can be customized and tailored. Sometimes we do a combination of both. But I've been in those community meetings where it's just like this.
Yeah.
I'm there and a couple of you guys are there, the fire chief's there and we're just looking at the walls.
Yeah.
So, and then, so, you know, you know the community better than, than, than we do. So if, if those things work and the community participates in them, then great. They're more likely to say, oh, if I can just go online for five minutes and take a quick survey and, and say, you know, the fire department meets the service needs of the community, strongly disagree to strongly agree and they, they check their boxes and add a few comments and move on, then, then, you know, we can certainly work something in like that.
Okay.
And then the, the data collection, analyzing everything, assessing all the alternatives that are available for you guys, and then discussing all the findings and, and possible solutions along the way. So the, the task plan was really broken up into starting with the interviews like we always do, then collecting the data and doing some analysis and giving you the, the as-is current state and then looking at what your options are from a, an improvement standpoint and how you're deploying personnel and apparatus, the management practices you have in place. Are there regional opportunities out there to partner with somebody else? What, what makes the most sense and, and what's going to get you the best service delivery for the dollars? The, the project, we, we have slated to be 16 weeks and I find that to be a good timeframe because it keeps everybody on point. There's only two things that delay projects, so 16 weeks is very doable. If you're on a fast track, you can do them in 12, but that really causes people to be on point. And anytime you're starting September-ish, you're always buttoned up against Thanksgiving and Christmas pretty quick.
Sure.
So you, so you either got to get it done before then or there's going to be holiday delays built in, just, just because you can't avoid it. But the data collection, so we never know going in, we give the data collection list as everything on the computer, ready to go and, and it just, poof, it's, it's delivered quick. Or, you know, hold on, I've, I've got to write down the roster of who we have and what their ranks are. So, so our assumption is always that we can get the data within a couple of weeks and if, and if that works, then, then we can move pretty good. And then the second is review of interim deliverables. So when we send something back in to be reviewed and fact-checked to make sure we're on a good factual basis, you know, we always give about a week to turn those around and get them back to us. And that, that just keeps us on point, keeps you guys on point and then, and allows the study to progress. When you see six-month schedules or nine-month schedules for these projects, there's, there's a lot of downtime built into those where nothing's going to be going on and then, then it gets stale. But, but we like to have one, one or two projects starting, couple of projects kind of in the middle, because people are reviewing stuff and then that's when you're doing site work and then, and then you're wrapping up one or two. So generally, you don't have any more than six going at one time, which, with four being probably the, the perfect number for just able to, to do everything great.
Have you done towns as small as ours?
Smaller.
Smaller, really?
Yeah, Bedford, New York is just a tiny little hamlet, so it's a, it's a wealthy hamlet, but it's, the fire department was on their little green and had a lot of, had had a lot of issues. But we, we've done everything from all volunteer, small departments, you know, as big as Boston.
Okay.
So it's a very, very diverse, we, you know, most of, most of our studies in, in the Northeast, when you get into Vermont and New Hampshire, Lincoln, Rhode Island, you know, that, there's, there's smaller organizations, smaller towns. When you get out, out West, it's, you start seeing more career departments out there and, and less volunteers because the way everything's developed out there, there's long commute times to work and, you know, there's not that ability.
Yeah.
So, so yeah, you, you wouldn't be unique from a size perspective at all. Most of our studies are, are towns under 50,000 people. And then, you know, because there's, there's a lot more towns that size than there are Boston's and Sacramento's and
Sure.
and the big cities. So as far as why we select us, our experience speaks for itself. We've, we've been in existence since 2001, have done, at this point, over 300 fire studies across the country for organizations of all sizes, from all volunteer to combination departments to, to full career. We have extensive experience in Massachusetts, New England, and, and the Northeast in general. We've, we've done quite a few studies in, in just that small little portion of the country. We always bring a team together that's, that's cross-functional, that are, you've got industry experts as well as people that, that have their expertise in, in other things like the GIS and the, and the data analytics and, and bring those strengths to the table instead of just having guys like me that have lived the life and moved on to the consultancy side. And then, and then I think the key is, the, the big thing that differs us is that fact-based, jurisdictionally-specific approach that really involves the town, involves the key stakeholders that you want to be involved. If you name somebody, we're talking to them. So it, you know, for us, that, that doesn't matter. It's, it's, you know, fly up on Monday, do interviews Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, fly home. Or, oh, there's only enough people to fill me for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Or, oh no, there's enough to fill Terry and I both for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So we just adjust who's coming and how long we're staying based on the number of bodies we need to talk to. And then, and then we remain available after the project for any implementation assistance. So if, if there's something in there and the chief and his, his personnel say, man, we're struggling with this and it's, it's a three-year down the road, he just has to pick up the, the phone and say, okay, we've made it to this and have you, have you experienced this? This, this isn't going as smooth as we thought, what's going on? So we remain available to you after that and it's, it's part of this fee. It's not, it's not something, oh yeah, we can talk to you, hold on, let me start the timer. You know, so, so that's a, that's always been our approach to remain available. It, it gets us a lot of return business because sometimes people want, you know, 10 years later, like Dinuba, California, every 10 years, come back and do another 10-year master plan for the fire department. So, but while they're, while they're implementing things during, in the, in between 10 years, you know, we're there for them to call up and bounce the ideas off, because chances are, whatever you're struggling with, we've seen it somewhere. Somebody, you're not, you're not the first one struggling with this and not the first one to go through it. You know, we're excited about the opportunity to work with you. I love, lobster rolls are one of my favorite things.
[laughter]
Where, where else can you get better ones than here in Maine?
Nowhere.
So that's it. So I love coming back. I love the history of this area and, and working in this area. Grew up in Long Island and then moved to Texas as a, as a teenager, so, so I always liked to get back east and go Sox.
So many different approaches to deal with issues and we're speaking with several firms and certainly what you described sounds pretty comprehensive. Any weaknesses in your approach? What do you hear, if you hear anything less than laudatory?
The, you know, very rarely do I, do I hear any issues, but I'll give you an example. In, in Sonoma, we're doing a project in, Sonoma County, California's huge and they've got like 40 different fire service agencies providing the service. And as we went through and, you know, you're, you're analyzing And as we went through and, you know, you're, you're analyzing metropolitan areas all the way down to, there's a chief and a, and a fire truck, and he's the only person staffed in that station. So, so trying to figure out deployments and that, and it was a standard cover study, and the, and the comment was that we didn't recommend any consolidation of agencies. And, you know, that was never brought up, and it, it wasn't in the scope. So, so it's like, well, we'll go back and we'll look, look for those, but, you know, this was to tell you how, how well your current deployment model works and how many people you can put on, on scenes in, in a timely manner. It's a little different, but, so that one, we're having to go back and work. And then every once in a while, you know, I'll get dinged on some grammar or something.
You get what?
Dinged on grammar, missing a comma or misspelling a word, not catching it in the first read. So, so full disclosure, until it gets proofread, you, you may
We're pretty, we're pretty lenient on commas. Semi-colons is a little different.
Warren, did you have some?
Yeah, sure. One, one of the challenges that this town is facing, well, the Board of Selectment and Fire Chief are facing, and it's probably not uncommon, it's the understanding of how the fire department works in the community. There are some of our residents who drive by, I think we're fully staffed like Quincy Fire. Others may think, well, you know, what do they offer? What are the services they offer? So understanding the nature of how a fire department works in a community has been a challenge to get that message out. And as we go forward in the budgetary process and bringing us forward to meet the needs of today, which has increased, the calls, calls for service have increased, the scope of what we provide for service has increased, helping the public to understand what is the nature of that, how it works, that's been a challenge, and that's something that I think is, information is power, and that's something we're trying to achieve here also, so that it's not just what does the current Board of Selectment think, not just what does the Fire Chief think. It's tying in with a consultant study and working towards what's best for our community by and large, a level of service cost, all of those things.
It may be, based on, on that, it may be helpful in a study like this then to add kind of a history component, but, you know, and, and not a 100-page history of your fire department thing, but, but something that kind of tells the story of, here's how we started, here's, here's where we've gone, here's the services that have been added, you know, these are, these are the different things that now what it takes to be a, a functional fire department in, in these times. And then lay out, here's, here's how you're staffed. Because the, the good thing about these reports is they're public documents, and, and, you know, you make them available online, you guys obviously make your documents available on the table out front. So it's available, and any citizen that takes the time to pick it up, they're gonna get it. And that's, that's when you, as the fire chief, and, and you, as the elected officials, get the best information, is when they're informed and they say, wait, that's, that's not what we want. We want 24 hours a day, seven days a week, four-minute travel times. Then you say, well, that's expensive. That, you know, we can't, that's gonna take lots of stations, you know, it's, it's not gonna, it can't happen from, from a single station. It may not be able to happen from two stations. So, so that's where you have to educate them on, on how that changes the dynamic and, and then what that impact is, because, you know, bringing a station online is, is one thing for the capital expense, but that million dollars a year of recurring costs to operate it, you know, 24 days, 24 hours a day, seven days a week is, is a whole different thing. So, so you gotta show that and, and make sure that it's, it's eyes wide open. Whoa, we're, we are not willing to pay for that level of service. You know, so, so then you get the, the proper feedback.
And we are able to demonstrate the timeline of how the fire services worked here, as early as 1974, when it was still a Board of Fire Engineers, and it was determined that we should at least have one full-timer in town, and it was the Fire Chief at the time. A study was done at that time and gave recommendations. We can lay our hands on that. Fast forward as we decided in this community, we need to start an ambulance service, and we did it at the BLS level. How did we achieve that? And then from there, in 2012, when we looked at a study to go advanced life support, a study was done then, some findings were looked at, some projections were looked at, and then now here we are, let's take a look at that. So there is a timeline that you'll be able to access in, so that we go, can share and understand the nature of where we've been and where we're going. So that is available.
Yeah, it's, anytime you add services, you, you're gonna add call demand because then people are saying, oh, call them.
Right.
So, I think I read in the 2016 annual report, your calls went up 26% between 2015 and 2016. So that's, I mean, that's a big jump for any organization, that kind of growth. So we, we gotta look at what's driving it. I mean, is it, are, is it critical calls, or are they now calling for less critical things because you're providing a service and, and they get it?
We are getting, you know, we are doing, would you, what's the term when we do other towns?
Mutual aid.
Mutual aid. So we are getting revenue now that we probably didn't get very little, almost zero before. And one of the things from my perspective is how do we put that into the reporting system so that as we talk to the town, we're not just talking to the cost side of the equation?
We, we always put the full budget in
Yeah.
and, and show the revenues
Revenue side, yeah.
and the, uh, fire department revenue side's always disappointing because most of it's general fund revenue.
Yeah.
You know, coke fund, $23 last year, so it doesn't bring a lot. But if, but if the ambulance business is doing, you know, increasing their, their response area and generating revenue from that, we would certainly show that, and we would show that, you know, here's what, here's what they've taken in, and they're, they're providing services outside the town. So people understand that too, because, you know, there's, there's always that question, why did I see our ambulance there?
Yeah.
Why aren't they here in our town? So you gotta, you know, make sure that they understand that and how, how it's a regional approach to meeting the service needs, because no one can staff for the worst day in their town.
Right.
No one does, no one can, you know, even
That, that's one of the things too, it seems that, you know, with the ALS EMS program now, we see less fires maybe?
Mm-hmm.
You know? The houses are better built and there's less of them, more, so
Thankfully.
Better code enforcement.
Yeah.
Right.
So as it sort of evolves towards the ambulance side, you know, then you start to see, well, now you need higher pay because of the certifications, these people are all professionals, they're, and they can go almost any town around here, there doesn't seem to be enough of them.
Mm-hmm.
That's one of the things we need to wrestle with is what's appropriate for this town, given that we've got all this competition around us.
You know, a lot of cities and towns, what they do is they just pick benchmark communities. These are the ones, this is our competition, this is who we're gonna benchmark against, but it doesn't matter because you, you know, once, once you give your guys a little more than your benchmark communities have to do it to meet the same.
Yeah.
And it just becomes a, a never-ending, small increases year after year.
So this is overly blunt, but I, I think in the quotes that we've seen along the way, I think you guys are at the high end, and I presume it's because you're so comprehensive and worth it. Is that true?
Yeah, so, and, and we don't come back to you asking for more money. And I think that's important because, you know, we look at it in, in each job, so when we look at it, it's like, okay, based on the scope of work, how many hours do we think it's gonna take? And we lay it out by the hour, show our, our true costs, and, and then there, there it is. So it's, you know, it, it takes time to put that together, and, and we're usually, you know, very good at, at staying on budget and, and, and meeting client expectations and, and doing it in, on time and on budget, and, and we don't come back to you saying, oh gosh, this is gonna cost more. So, you know, the, the question always is, is if you see really low bids, is how can they do it for that? Because, and, you know, unless they're not coming here, you know, there's gonna be travel costs, you gotta, you know, you gotta eat, you gotta sleep, you gotta
Sure.
So there's, there's travel costs and, and, and then there's time. So the way we do it takes time for me to sit down with elected officials, to sit down with the fire department, to go meet the neighbors and, and talk all this stuff through so we really understand what's going on. That, that's the, probably the most time-consuming part of it is, is getting through all that and into the, the fact-based as-is, here's our understanding now, based on, on interviews and data collection. And if you don't do that, that, you know, the, your products are gonna be diluted. And that's one thing that we don't, we don't like to do is dilute them.
So we, we have been looking at this and trying to open our perspective to explore all options, regionalization, privatization. Your study of us would include the advisability or non-advisability of those options?
My study will include, anything you guys tell me is important to you. So when we, when, when I sit down and, and meet with Mr. Trainer, and I meet with Ms. Joy, and I meet with you, you're all gonna get the same chance to say, I, I need to hear these answers, I need to know this, for me to know what good looks like. And the chief's idea of what good looks like is gonna be a little different than yours, and, and theirs is gonna be a little different than the chief's. So, so we take all those interview notes together, and then we come up with our plan of, okay, here's, we gotta talk about regionalization, we gotta talk about privatization, we gotta talk about moving from mutual aid to automatic aid, we gotta, you know, whatever it is, we've gotta cover it, because that's what good looks like here. And that's, you know, that's important to be flexible on the front end so that you can get that. You know, not, no, this is our, this is our proposal, and that's what we do, is, we, we don't deviate from that, or it's gonna cost you. So, you know, that's the one thing I would, I would just caution you on, on a, on a lower price is, is are there add-ons later? Can, if, you know, if we ask for different looks and regionalization in this, does, does that change the cost? Because it may. Because I know the first time I sent it to you, you were like, oh, you, you have in there that you're going to interview the neighbors and do all that? Well, back some of that out, because that's
Right.
that's a little, it's too soon for that.
Right, right. The, the issue is we, we are not well-educated in this, and that's what we're trying to get to, you know, so that we can educate the residents. And the other committees around here, Finance Committee, because we just kinda continue the way of saying, well, you cost your X and his 2% more, and go make it happen. We have to make sure we understand how we should be operating operationally, and then if the numbers don't fall out the way we want them, how do we start talking through that?
I mean, there's a chance we may find partnership opportunities with the police department. We don't know that, that either yet, where there could be some efficiencies there. As we, as we get into it, if, if that's something the town is open to, you know, like in, in our organization, we shared a person over training, and we shared a person for records. Because the police department was great at handling records, the fire department's terrible. So having, having their records people handle our records too, I didn't need a full-time one, the police didn't need a full-time one, but together we sure did. And then as we grew and the town grew, then we needed a part-time or two to assist, and but, but public education, we did all that together. So there, if, if there was a public education event, it was always a police and fire public education event, and, and the people that did it could talk either side of the fence. You know, they, they learned what the NFPA Fire Prevention theme of the year was, and, and they had their, their crime prevention stuff, and they could talk both topics, and, and then we didn't have to hire people to do both. So we can, you know, instead of them having one, us having one, we, we shared different things that just functionally made sense. And when you get into smaller towns and cities, sometimes that's the best way because, you know, the, the funds are limited, and the police department's gonna be saying, well, I need, I need someone for records, and the fire department's gonna be like, look, we got ambulance report, HIPAA compliance, and all these other things. Well, I need somebody to maintain my records too, but there's really not enough workload in either one. But together, there's plenty.
I thought about that.
I really like what you're saying right there. With us giving you the scope, kind of scares me because I don't know what I don't know. And we're relying on you to come up with suggestions like that. You know, have you considered combining with police on doing these training sessions and records-keeping? And your expertise in guiding us in this process and making recommendations based on your experience rather than John wants you to hit this button and I want you to hit this button, we're not the experts, you're the expert. I want you to come and say, you know, what you're doing is great, but I think that you need to be spending more money on your fire department if you're gonna make it work, or this really isn't in your best interest. Long-term, you need to look at regionalization, possibly even just weekends, whatever, but I think that's, for me, that's what I'm looking for from you, is for you to come in and make a recommendation to us as to what you think, based on your expertise, is the best way for us to
And in that, in that issues phase, we have the findings and, and then the discussion points, that's where we'll talk about those things.
Okay.
Have you ever considered, what are your thoughts on this type of an approach? You know, because sometimes you'll get, no, don't even try that here, that's political suicide, and that's not my goal.
Right, and that's the best time to bring it up.
So, so I say, you know, what about, I don't know who the next town over is, I can't remember.
Okay.
But, but what about working with them? Oh, no! You know, that's the Hatfield and McCoys.
We can have one of those.
You know? They're the Hatfields, we're the McCoys, and, and you can never recommend us
Yeah, we can't do that.
coming together, because it's not gonna happen. Okay, thank you, because I did not know that.
All right, that sounds good.
So, that's why we have that phase.
Okay.
You're gonna get run out of town, son. Okay, that's not what I wanted.
Plymouth, I knew you had Plymouth on here. What'd you do for Plymouth?
In Plymouth, we did a, a master planning study for the fire department.
Was that recent, or?
That's been eight years ago.
Okay.
So it was just before I joined the firm.
Yeah, okay.
Was one of the, and I, I'm not familiar with this study, I haven't read it yet about Plymouth. I can imagine one of the big questions was, do we take on EMS?
I don't remember if that was part of it or not.
They have not, they contact out, but I was curious if that was, you know, did the town look at, hey, should we take it on ourselves? What's the revenue stream look like? What are the logistics of all that? I would have expected that that probably would have been one of the big questions.
I didn't, I didn't, I don't remember that being in there, but that doesn't mean it wasn't.
Yes, right, okay, yeah.
Because, so Chelsea, when I was there, the fire department wanted to take over everything. And, and, you know, that was, that was an interesting study, because the, at the end of it, the union said, well, we want you to implement every recommendation that was made about management, but nothing about operations. We don't wanna change. So, so
And certainly some fire chiefs, they're set in their ways and how they want, and that could have been the case in Plymouth, I don't know. Whether or not the chief at the time, when you did your study, I'm not exactly sure, I, I think I know. Maybe his thought was, well, no, we're not prepared to go that, in that direction. So of course you have to address that too, on your, you know, on your findings too. So, that's the type of questions that we have, as we go forward, what's the best course of action? What's the best service to our residents? What are the best costs? All of those factors, as you could well imagine, are big, big factors on the table right now. And, and we're just looking, the, the Board of Selectment has always, and myself, always been willing to understand, we, first of all, we had no idea where we are today, today. I could have never predicted the growth we've had, and I don't think the Board of Selectment have either. So as we're going along here, and this thing's steamrolling up, we need to make sure we're going in the right direction. That's always been the key. The cost, the service, all of those factors, which our residents have questions about. They wanna know, what is the best way for us? This will help us to lay all those things out on the table, look at all the options, and then also come from a third party. So it's not just what the Selectment thinks, it's not just what the Fire Chief thinks, it's what, we need that piece, we really do. And, and so that's something that we, we, we need desperately in order to help to make it in the early days. What will the future, what's five years
Yeah, and I think, I think the, based on the discussion, it's more of a master plan study than a, so, so look at, everything's on the table. So let's master plan this out for 10 years.
Yes, thank you.
You know, look at what, what the growth's gonna be, what are the projections? You may, you may exceed them. What type of growth is it gonna be? Is, are there, you know, are there any plans for commercial development in different areas? And, you know, is something gonna change in the town? So
So you see this as a master plan, as versus, what would a lesser study be called?
Well, the, so the, you know, sometimes you'll just get one that's about staffing. Sometimes you'll get one that's only about station assessment, can you assess our station network? New Rochelle, that study, is what, they've, they've approved a downtown overlay, where they're gonna start doing 20 to 49-story high-rises. So what's the impact of, of us allowing high-rise development gonna have on the fire department? If, if all this stuff that we're putting in the plan actually happens? You know, right now, they've got their first two new 20-story ones that have just been approved, and they've got all that set on a fast track. approved, and they've got all that set on a fast track. So, you know, for the Fire Department, it's, you know, they're like, holy cow, that's, we're going really vertical, and that changes, that changes the game.
Sure, can you imagine?
You know, you get a town that says, we'll never have anything over five stories. It's a, it's a little easier to deal with, so.
So from what you've heard from us, you'd call this a 10-year master plan?
I think that would be the best, the best way to approach it, master plan it out for you. Get, get some community input, make sure the community's involved, whether it's some community meetings, going to the Lions Club, I mean, whatever it is, you know, doing that, or, or doing that online survey and getting their, their feedback online, whatever's going to work best for you. But involving the community from the beginning, involving the, the Fire Department, their personnel from the beginning, and, and then making it a community-based master plan.
Good.
That sounds good.
Excellent.
And you could do that for the price?
Yes, ma'am.
It's okay.
It just changes the way-
Oh, we tweaked it again.
Well, so the, the, the way you base those hours and everything is, is more on the community size than, than necessarily the scope of work, because, you know, you may add two or three hours into the writing of something because you've added these elements, but, but as long as you know that's happening up front and you get the data, you're analyzing the data anyway, you're looking at all this stuff anyway, so you just may look at a few more pieces, you know, add in some new elements and, and write a few more paragraphs about those specific things, but, but, you know, it doesn't dramatically change the study, because like I said, the, the most expensive part is, is the time we spend here learning about you, and, and that's based on our best guess about how many people you're going to have us talk to. Sometimes we hit a home run on that. New Rochelle, I wildly overestimated. I would have never guessed they had six people in, in their administration. You know, when they, you know, because you're going off online documents and looking at org charts, and you're like, well, they just say the captain of fire prevention. I know he's got a staff of 30 inspectors I'm going to have to talk to, because they've got all those high-rises. Nope, it was really just one guy. So, so now I've got more time, because I didn't have to spend as much on interviews for, for that narrow scope as, as I thought, because I was, I was going to be, you know, the training person is not just one in a department of 150 people. Yep, manager's one, so, so they had, they surprised me on the quick end. Other times you go in and they're like, so we want you to talk to all the elected officials, we want you to meet with the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, the school board, you know, and you're like, holy moly. So they surprised me on the other hand, but you just count the numbers and then, then we make it work.
Same timeline?
Same timeline. As long as we get the data, then those crazy kids can analyze it in Excel and make all those pretty charts and graphs and tables and-
Spreadsheets and tables, yeah. Well, thank you so much for coming in, this is great.
Thank you, I appreciate it. It was great talking with you, great meeting with you, and hopefully we'll go back. How quick are you thinking about making a decision?
Pretty quick.
Okay.
Well, we're taking off September, so we're taking off the late day.
The second week?
Yeah.
Like the 11th?
Probably by the 11th of September.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
We appreciate your time.
All right.
We're done.
Motion to adjourn?
And you don't get to guess what happened.
All right, all right.
Yeah, can imagine, Bob, nice to meet you.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
All right.
We're done.
Motion to adjourn?
And you don't get to guess what happened.